And to remain standing and to remember all those servants across the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I want to thank everyone for attending the Village of Woodbury Planning Board of April 4th, 2018. To my right, we have Board Member Robert Anzalone; to my left, Sandra Capriglione; we have Chris Chabelli, Secretary Gail Nogal; all the way to the far left, we have Dennis Lindsay, engineer, Stu Turner, our planner. Shorty? What chair did you -- what chair are you -- we're going to have to get new chairs around here. We'll have to talk to someone. Our attorney, Rick Golden and Kelly. And any other engineer out there? No, we're good. We have assistants. All right, and I'm Maria Hunter, your chairperson for the planning board. Board members, has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from February 21st?
Yes.
If so, do I have a motion to accept?
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Chris, did you say aye?
We're abstaining.
You're abstaining, okay. And the reason why we haven't had -- we didn't have any meetings in March due to all the snowstorms, so I'm glad we had a s -- no storm tonight. Yay!
Almost.
Almost, as long as it -- the rain stays away, right? First item on the agenda is Smith, Seaman, and Quackenbush. I'm just going to read the -- it's public hearing for amendment to site plan and special permit, including ARB of addition and renovation to existing funeral homes. Said property is located at 515 Route 32 in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 219 Block 5 Lot 12. Applicants here?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Morgante. I'm the engineer for this application.
Do you have the microphone on so we can all hear you? Could you be recorded?
Good evening. My name is Michael Morgante. I'm the engineer for this application for Smith, Seaman, and Quackenbush that's before the board.
All right, if you want to give us a brief overview, since it's a public hearing, so the public understands what we're looking at.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, Smith, Seaman, and Quackenbush is actually located directly next door to the Village Hall here, just to the east of us on Route 32. What the funeral home is looking to do here is perform a couple of minor additions to the existing structure. They would like to add new siding to the existing building and obviously the new additions and do some renovations within the existing building itself along with the additions that are proposed. There'll be a slight increase in impervious surface associated with the addition to the existing building. As long with the proposed addition to the building, we've taken the opportunity to properly allocate some handicap parking spaces just to the west of the building. We've got a loading area there for handicap access, taking an opportunity to prepare proper handicap accessible ramps that lead to the proposed addition. There's a slight relocation or addition of the door on the west side, which will also lead to the entrance that comes off of New York State Route 32. And as we've discussed with the board in previous meetings, we do not believe that there'll be a requirement for additional parking associated with this proposed addition, but we have shown we would like to call banked parking spaces or shadow parking spaces located to the northeast corner of the site, so that should additional parking be required, at least we've performed proper planning for it and have shown it on the plan such that it could be enforced later on in the future. We have some architectural renderings that we can also go over quickly with the board. We also have some architectural review board materials that we can supply to the board also for their review. So, as you can see here, this would be Sheet A101. It's the new first floor plan associated with the structure. And you can see here in the hatched area -- not the hatched areas, but the shaded gray areas, we're looking to essentially construct some storage space here. There'll be a new lobby here. These will be the stairs that now lead to the entrance that's intersecting with Route 32. You will have women's and men's bathrooms here. And on this side, the hatched area just represents a little bit of a bump out for some bay windows, as you can see on that first floor plan. The renovated second floor plan doesn't really change any floor area, but more or less just relocates some of the existing bedrooms and dining area. Proposes a dining area over here. Nothing, again, to increase floor area, just really a reshuffling of the existing rooms and relabeling of some of the rooms. We've also provided an architectural rendering here, an elevation view, so you can see in the hatched area in gray here what the rear elevation now will look like in the back. You can take a look at the right side elevation here, which shows that little bump out for the bay window area, so to speak. We've shown a schedule for proposed building materials and color scheme on the bottom right-hand corner here. And again, this is Sheet A201 of the architectural plans. And on Sheet A200, you can see here what the new front elevation will look like. Essentially, the front of the building is not really changing much. You'll see this little bump out again on the right-hand side here for the bay windows. This will be the addition that we spoke about earlier with the stairs now that lead to the driveway that accesses 32. And this is what the new left side elevation will look like also. It's probably also worth noting that the color of the siding that is being proposed is essentially a white hardy plank type siding. I believe we're going with black shutters. It won't be that different looking than it is now. It'll just look a lot cleaned up and neater and a regular 30 or architectural roof shingle to go with it. It'll probably be like a slate gray or something like that.
On the sheet, it says onyx slash black.
Yeah, onyx gray. I have never been -- yeah, something like that. It's an onyx color, yeah.
Okay. I'll just add the word gray in there so it's clear.
I'm not sure if onyx is black or gray quite -- I always thought it was a dark, dark gray. Or almost a black, I don't know.
You have a sample here tonight? You have a sample?
I do have samples. I can show the board.
Take the exact name off of it, so it's listed correctly. If you have the samples, you can show the board right now and we'll --
So, they're not changing the color of the building, they're just changing the color of the green to black for the shutters. And without saying, I know when we met, once everything is set and complete, there really isn't -- you'll be adding -- where'd he go? Oh, there he is. I'm like, he disappeared! You'll be adding the landscaping, which you're going to --
Correct.
Okay.
I just want to have --
Which is -- this is? So, it's not Owen Corning? Okay. Basically, you're going to be matching the roof colors, right?
Yes.
All right. If anyone wants to go outside the building and take a look at the roof, you know, you can go take a look at the roof right now. It's still light out, right? Rick, do you need the exact?
I just want to confirm for the ARB drawings, there's only six of them. If we could confirm the last revision dates, because although we're talking about dates now in 2018, the revision dates we have are all 2017. So, I wanted to make sure for the resolution that we're talking about the same sheet. So, if you could, for instance, D100, what's the last revision date?
So, I'll start with A200, because that's what I have here before me. It's 2/26/18, February 26, 2018.
Right, that's different from -- okay.
There are two separate ones.
What about A201?
Are they the ones -- Are they the ones that were dated that we received on February 27?
That's correct.
Well, we're going to have to check that.
Did I leave the wrong one home?
This one is dated February 26, 2018, A201.
Okay.
A101 is dated February 26, 2018.
Hold on a second.
And A102 is January 16, 2018.
Okay. And the D100 and 101?
Those are the existences, hold on.
Okay. If you open it up, the dates are on the first page, didn't have an update. As you go inside, as you go inside, they're dated.
D101 has no revision dates. The original date of production -- actually, you know, the original date of production is July 6, 2017.
Okay. And D100?
June 11, 2017.
Okay.
On D100?
D100.
Yeah, that's your original, yeah. And 101 is 7/6/17.
7/6/17, right.
I can also show the board some samples of what the siding might look like.
Sure. But Rick?
Yes?
I don't see the exact color name in here for the roof. I guess you'll have to -- we'll have to confirm that. If it says it's going to be --
Well, the roof says onyx, which I believe is a color.
Right. And Board Members, do you have a problem with the name of it, as long as it's the same roof color?
No problem. It's called dark gray or black.
You're okay with that? All right. Boom, done with the roof.
What is it called on the sheet? Because that's what Gary's going to look at.
It says Owen's Corning is the manufacturer, style onyx slash black.
Okay.
And it's arch dash shake for the color, which is -- should be that.
That's what the ARB application says. But what does the sample say?
Well, that's just -- I don't know if the sample name --
Sample may not be -- have the correct meaning.
Well, if we need an approval tonight, then we need that tonight.
And this is the hardy plank?
Yes, this is the hardy.
It's the manufacturer's hardy plank, style is smooth, and the color is white. Where's the white? Up there? Arctic white? Arctic white. Because the building's white right now, so.
Correct.
All right. And the shutters are going to be?
Black.
Is the manufacturer called shutters?
The manufacturer of the shutters, is that on the plans?
On the ARB application, it says panel.
Sorry, it says what?
Panel or panel. Style is panel. The colors -- The manufacturer says shutters, but it doesn't say?
It's Owen's Corning.
Owen's Corning, okay.
Oh, boy.
That's okay. It's been a long day with the rain. We're all a little muddled here.
That's worthy of getting a hard time.
Windows is typical. They're Anderson double hung. They're white. And the hardy board trim is PVC white. Board Members, do you have any problems with this?
No.
Okay. Boom. All right.
Yeah, it looks like it is onyx black.
Okay.
On a sample.
Beautiful.
From Lowe's.
Okay.
It is onyx black.
Perfect.
Yes.
All right, so we're good with the ARB application? Anything else that you want to tell us? I can move on to Dennis.
I believe I covered pretty much everything for the project.
Okay. Dennis, you have a memo that stated which one are we looking at tonight? February 1st or the 15th? Or we're good?
We have one from February 1st. It was supplemented by one on February 15.
Right.
That talked about the site plan and what they were proposing. That hasn't changed. That memo reviewed the use, applicability in the code, the bulk regulations. There were some comments about encroachments, which I think would be incorporated into the resolution, simply to say that your action, by your action, you're not approving any encroachments. That's between the property owners. As I mentioned to you before, one of the things we review when there's an encroachment like this and there's no proposed work in the area, that the site could function if the encroachment was enforced by the adjacent property owner. In other words, if someone said, "You must vacate our land with an encroachment," do they have the opportunity to correct the situation? And in this particular case, they do. I don't see there's going to be any need or any requirement, because no one's trying to act on that. But in looking at the plan, they could remedy the situation if they were required, so your approval would not be in vain, or if your action would not be in vain, that they could remedy that situation. As far as the parking is concerned, in doing the analysis, we determined that we thought they were one space short from what they've shown, but there's ample opportunity in the back area where the bank parking is shown. If you approve the bank parking, banked, B-A-N-K-E-D, if you approve that, then they should just show another banked space, if you will, or shadow parking, that Gary could enforce in the future, should it be required. And that's what you've done on others. We made some comments on stormwater and utilities. And I don't think there's any particular action for that. The last comment was on the architectural review. And in terms of the architectural review, they have now complied with your requirements. You now have the details, as Mike described to you, and I'm not going to redo that. He's already advised you on that. And you, I think, have all the information in front of you and in the public to receive comments and to take necessary actions. Unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you. Stu?
No, we had prepared our comments much earlier in the process, and I think the only thing that we were --
Is there a microphone, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
We've got a share over there.
We've been away too long. Okay, we had prepared comments much earlier in the process. We had no planning comments. The landscaping, I think we had some comments on the -- but the landscaping is in place, I think, now. I don't think there are any significant changes, according to the plan. So, we're okay. The bank parking, I think we did have comments on, but Dennis just commented on that, so bank parking is fine.
Thank you.
From our -- from a planning perspective.
Rick?
Okay, we have prepared a resolution for your consideration. We will be updating the dates on the plan sheets, consistent with what was represented tonight. We will also add to that the ARB application and its date. And other than that, there was a sort of a placeholder here for specific condition number five, which would -- we were going to add any conditions based upon your review and your consideration of the public comments. So, if there are none, we will just take out that specific condition number five.
Okay. And we declared this a Type 2 action on February 21st?
Correct.
So, we're good with secret and everything?
Yes.
Beautiful. And as I mentioned, we received comments back from the Orange County Department of Planning and the Orange County DPW back in February 16th. All right. I'm going to ask you to have a seat, since this is a public hearing. I'm just going to read the notice that was in the newspaper on Friday, the 30th of March. Notice hereby given that the Village of Woodbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing at 7:30 PM on Wednesday, April 4th, at Woodbury Town Hall, 511 Route 32, Highland Mills, New York, in the matter of the application of Smith, Seaman, and Quackenbush for an amendment to the site plan and special permit, including ARB of addition and renovation to existing funeral home. Said property is located at 515 Route 32 in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 219 Block 5 Lot 12. All right, anyone in the first row want to comment on this? Second row? Third row? Fourth row? Fifth row? Anyone in the room that want to comment on this public hearing for the Smith, Seaman, and Quackenbush? None being said, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Chris, you seconded it?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of closed public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Board, what is your pleasure at this time with the resolution? Read it? Okay. We have a draft resolution. It's a draft amended resolution of approval of site plan and architectural review board for Smith, Seaman, and Quackenbush. And my date says last revised March 5, 2018. Is that correct?
Correct.
I didn't want to send out a different one.
That's fine. And just for those, and for the public and for the viewers at home, in March, this public hearing was scheduled twice and was postponed and carried over. So, I want to thank the Smith, Seaman, and Quackenbush for being understanding with the weather. All right. On page one, we're good. Page two. Page three. On page three, you'll change the date. A public hearing was held on April 4th.
Correct.
Okay. So, I'm going to page four, resolution of approval. Specific conditions, number one, all applicable conditions attached to the prior architectural review board approval for this property and project are hereby incorporated into this resolution and are to remain in full force and effect, and this approval is subject to and conditioned upon satisfaction of those conditions as if they were set forth at length herein. Mike, you did a copy of this resolution? Anyone have an extra resolution to give to? I'm sorry. Do you mind? You can have Sandy's. She said you can have hers. I apologize for that. I'll have to make sure that we -- make sure the applicants -- No problem. You're okay with number one as I read it?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, prior to signing of the plans, the applicant shall revise the plans to comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated February 1st, 2018. And February 15?
February or March?
March, wait a minute.
Yeah, if it was -- the original one was March 7.
Hold on a second.
It's February 15.
February 15th and February 1st, okay. So, we're going to add the dates and February 15th. Number three, by this resolution of approval, the planning board is not approving the use of the prop -- the use of or the propriety of the location of the encroachments on the subject lot in parentheses, Section 219 Block 5 Lot 12, and parentheses, or the adjoining lots. Four, prior to signing of the plans, the applicant shall revise the plans to show additional future in parentheses, shadow parking north of the proposed lot. The additional parking spaces shall be constructed and strict upon a determination of the building inspector that are not -- that are needed to avoid congestive parking on the property. At such time, as the building inspector determines that the additional parking spaces are needed, the applicant shall provide a drainage plan to the satisfaction of the village engineer for the additional parking spaces. If the applicant fails to provide a solution for stormwater management satisfactory to the village engineer, the applicant shall return to the planning board for further review. You're okay with that? Okay. Do we need to add anything else on number five?
Not from our point of view. If the board wants something, we'll put it in.
Board Members, do we need anything?
No.
No.
Nope. All right, so we're going to delete number five, because it's not needed. Okay, with all that being said, and the revisions of the dates on pages three and four, what's the pleasure of the board? Do I have a motion to accept the resolution as read with the corrections?
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Have a good night. Once you get the plans in and Dennis says they're satisfactory for me to sign, then I will sign them. All right. Thank you for your patience and tell Colin hello for us. Next item on the agenda is Genco, review and discuss revised site plan and ARB submitted for proposed townhouse slash condo units on vacant property. Said properties are located in the HB zoning district at 6 and 8 Falkirk Avenue in Central Valley and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 231 Block 3 Lot 6.1 and 6.2. Just give me a moment to -- the applicant's here? Oh. Oh, that's right. I forgot that you had both. I'm sorry, I was nice enough to put you both together. No, take your time.
Give me a chance to get my papers together.
Okay. Good evening again. My name is Michael Morgante. I'm the engineer for this application that's before the board also. This is Genco Realty Site Plan, located on Falkirk Avenue, near the intersection of Smith-Clove Road. And what you have here before you is a proposed development that consists of seven townhouse style units. The units are served by a driveway that connects to Falkirk Avenue. There's a connection to -- there's a proposed connection to the existing municipal sewer system that's located on Falkirk. We had taken into consideration some advice from the village engineer, made those changes on these plans, including a doghouse manhole and a few other items that he had considered that we took under advice and have incorporated onto the plans. We're also showing connection to the existing municipal water supply that'll serve both buildings. We have shown an extension, or I should say, a replacement of the existing water line there to an eight-inch water line, so that we can accommodate fire flows in case of any fire event for the project. We propose a fire hydrant near the intersection of the entrance and Falkirk Avenue. We understand that, I guess, some of the ESOs had some comments on that as to the location of it. We reviewed that memo and would be glad to make those changes moving forward in terms of relocation of that hydrant. The site is also going to be served to the rear of the property, or I guess to the south of the property, by a stormwater management system. That stormwater management system will be below grade. It'll collect the rooftop runoff from the proposed townhomes. It'll also collect the runoff from the proposed impervious pavement. It will essentially detain and infiltrate most of the flow, overflows to provide water quality treatment. I should not get too far ahead of myself, to provide water quality treatment for the runoff, which is typically associated with what we call the first flush of stormwater. So, in other words, the first inch or so, or two inches of water or less that come off the impervious surfaces contain most of the pollutants. Those pollutants are going to be contained in what we call isolator rows. The first two rows are located here, nearest to the pavement for the parking lot. Anything above that storm event will overflow into the adjacent units behind it, the storm tech units behind it, and provide what we call attenuation of stormwater flows for the 10-year storm event and the 100-year storm event. So, the idea there is not only to provide water quality treatment, but to also make sure that there's no additional rate of runoff associated with post-development in that construction situation as there would be compared to the pre-development situation that exists right now. We're also proposing a retaining wall in the back, because we were trying to lift the site up a little bit with a little bit of fill to try to keep it out of the 100-year floodplain. Should be noted that the site completely exists within a 100-year floodplain. We have situated the dwellings such that they are a first floor elevation that's two feet above the 100-year floodplain elevation to meet FEMA regulations. We have also, as a result of implementing the retaining wall to raise the site up and to be able to construct the stormwater management system, it's also helped us to balance the amount of fill that we have on the site. And what I -- And what I mean by that is that any fill that we're bringing into the site to raise the site up above the 100-year flood level, we're also compensating by excavating material out behind the retaining wall such that there's a zero net condition of fill within this site. Okay, so fill has been compensated for. It's been brought in. That's a requirement of constructing essentially anything within a 100-year floodplain. So yeah, that's the essential, essentially the, the idea of what's going on behind the, the site development. We've proposed a pretty extensive landscaping plan that'll, that'll hopefully meet the requirements of the village code as it relates to that. We provided a lighting plan that we also believe meets the lighting code of the village. And in general, that's, that's an overview of the project. I'll turn it over to the board and the board's consultants for any questions or concerns.
Thank you. Just for the record, on March 15th, we did have an ESO meeting with myself, Mr. Thomasberger, Building Inspector, Don Prizzillo from the Woodbury Fire Department, Chief Watson from the Woodbury Police, and Dennis Lindsay, the engineer. And you did receive a copy of that memo as you stated, right?
I did.
All right, so just want to make that note. Also, on March 5th, I received, we received a Part Two, fully EAF. On March 14th, we received a report from Nelson Pope and Vures. March 15th, we received a memo from H2M. And on March 6th, we received the ARB application. And then, once we get to that a little bit, I'll wait till later. I just want to clarify because I have some many pages here for ARB, so I want to put aside what's not relevant anymore, okay? All right, with that being said, I'm going to jump over to Dennis.
Sure. As you know, this application has been discussed previously by the board. We prepared a memo comment for a number of items that we had. The applicant reviewed that, and this set of plans you have reflects a number of changes to the comments that we made, mostly all positive, complying with the requirements that we had. In terms of use, this is a complying use, and they have changed the density so that they're also complying with the density. There's no variance required. They have made the modifications to the sewer and water that we requested, as well as what the, the requests of the Fire Department, a relocation of the fire hydrant. As far as stormwater and grading, they have provided a comprehensive plan. We commented on that, and again, they have modified the plan to suit our requirements. They have a sign that they're proposing, and they've indicated that that would be provided with future submissions. My recommendation to the applicant is that they do not want to return. I think they want to finish this application, so they should have those details available, particularly if the board schedules a, a public hearing on this. Architectural review, this is subject to architectural review. They have submitted materials to you, color renderings of the views and to try to give you a clear indication of what they're proposing. I think you should have some discussion, as you mentioned, Maria, with, with the applicant here to make sure that that's the way they intend to proceed and that that is complete. And then with your public hearing on the site plan, you would want to have, I think, the public hearing on your ARB. There were a number of miscellaneous items that we went through, and the stone wall fencing easements, that's, I think, all been resolved. And I don't have any further comments, other than to note that we did meet with the ESOs, as you mentioned. They made some recommendations. And a number of the discussions we have with the ESOs, as well as with the board, have related to the floodplain issue here. It is in the floodplain. I spoke to Gary Thomasberger. He has some good history on this area. He's been in the village for a long time, as have I. We really haven't seen this particular property flood. We have seen areas around it flood. So that although it is in the floodplain, it is not prone. I mean, in Irene and Lee, and in Floyd, and in Sandy, this property did not flood, although it is in the floodplain. The applicant has addressed the floodplain issue by raising the property and doing the offset in the area where he's raised. They've offset it by removal of materials so that the floodplain didn't get diminished in terms of its storage capacity. And then the only issue remaining would be the access to the property. And so far, that has been a technical matter in terms of, the floodplain says there's an issue with access, and if it's, if it's true and that the analysis is correct, there would be an issue during a flood of access for a limited period of time. However, we've never experienced that. And so rather than let the property sit fallow, they've proposed a development solution. Their ESOs are not concerned about it. They think they can get adequate access. And that's our experience in the area. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Stu? Dennis, hold on a second.
Dennis, I just want to ask you a question on the fencing. Where, where is the split rail fencing going? Does it go all the way?
So the split rail fencing is shown right here, starting at the intersection of Falkirk, running along pretty much the property line. It comes across, connects to the retaining wall, goes around the back of the retaining wall, and ties back into the buildings over here. We didn't feel there was a need to connect a split rail fence from this corner of the building to Falkirk, although if the board would want us to consider that, we wouldn't take any exception to it.
Is the chain link fence staying on the left side?
No, that'll be removed. I think it's noted on one of the other plans sheets that it will be removed.
And there's, there's no fence behind the other three units? The, the only concern I have is there's a pretty deep, what is that, a tributary or a stream or whatever that is that runs there?
So the split rail fence will connect to the, so in essence, this site will be contained by the fence from where my finger is right here, all the way around the retaining wall, and will connect back into the buildings over here. There would only be this one little spot right here between the, I guess, building number, proposed building number three and Falkirk Avenue itself that would not have a split rail fence.
The buildings on the right, the three on the right, are, is there, there's a, are there any back doors? Aren't there like sliders that go out the back?
Yes, I would presume there are, yes.
That, that's my concern, is that depending on who's living there, if they go out the, especially a child, if they go out that back door, there's no fence or anything
Procluding them from...
...to that stream.
How, how deep is that drain?
So if you look at the contour elevations there, you're essentially, you're essentially going from contour elevation 482, and the stream is about at 478, 477. So it's a five-foot drop and probably well over 40 feet. It's not terribly steep. Matter of fact, we just took pictures today and submitted them to the State Historic Preservation Office, standing right over here, looking at the, at the stream, and from my knowledge, I don't, I don't think it's a considerably dangerous slope that an adolescent or anyone would traverse and get hurt.
I guess with the melting snow, the rain, and, and with spring, it must be running hot.
It seems like it's running high.
The stream running high, yeah.
As all streams are.
Sure.
That's why I just was, I was curious as to whether or not the split rail could be just maybe run along there, just as a deterrent.
So you would like us to turn the split rail fence this way and try to run it through the back of the property, like in front of the stone wall?
I mean, you have a divider between, on the left-hand side, between the units and the house, which is pretty close on the left-hand side.
Now, the...
Right here.
The unit with the four buil, the, the building with the four units.
Yep.
Is there a back, is there a backyard to there?
It's like 10 feet.
It's, yeah, maybe, maybe 10 feet.
I'm, you know.
Mike, may I?
Go ahead. You take it.
I haven't been to the site in a while, but are any other property, any of the adjacent properties have fencing behind their buildings?
None, none that I know of, no. Not even the, the dwelling here to the, to the west of us. They're pretty much as close as we are to this, to the stream here, and they have no fencing that I know of or have seen.
But they don't really have a yard there either.
Well, the...
They're proper, I mean, that...
They can access, they can access the area behind their structures just as well as we can and find a way down to the, to the stream if they wanted to.
I thought there was some kind of guardrail or something there.
In the back of their buildings? That I don't recall.
It's, I just, that's a concern I have.
All right, well, we'll, we'll hold on to that thought for a second. Anything else, Sandy?
If it's a concern of the boards, we can continue running a split rail fence along the back of the property here, near the, the edge of the stream, if that would...
But before you do that, before you do that, you have to think about access to the brook for maintenance and things like that. Sometimes these places get clogged. Some people throw Christmas trees, you know, into them, and you have to get in there and access it. And it's, it does taper down, but then it's, it's more, it's really not that deep at the area, so we might want to take that under advisement and consider it. I'll take another look at it in the field and let you know where I think it's appropriate or not. But if it's really not a drop or anything like that, you may just, like any other drainage way we have, and sometimes it's better to be able to go in and pull out a log or pull out something that's creating a problem than having to work around a fence.
It might, it might be helpful with the engineer from, for the applicant and for our engineer, we, we have a site visit
Sure.
just to be clear, and then you could probably, and we could, I mean, we all know what it looks, most of us all know what it, you know, looks like down there, but I mean, I could take another ride down there if we, if you want to, do we want, does the board want him to mark out with stakes where the potential buildings might be going, or? I mean, we're okay with that? I mean...
You can, you can, pretty much from what's shown here on the map, you can see where there's a little bit of the steep part here. As you get towards the stream, it's pretty easy to start from there, walk about 40 feet back and know where the buildings approximately are going to be.
Knowing, no, I mean, you've had two boys, Sandy, I've, I've had two boys. I mean, if we have, fences do not prevent children from going to a stream when they want to walk up and down the stream. I, I...
I was one of those boys.
Yeah, and I mean, I have a stream in front of my house right now, so I, I know darn well, a fence would never kept my kids out of it. But I mean, we can take a look at it, but we can, we can make a decision on that. All right?
That's fine.
Stu?
Okay, well, we've discussed, actually, one of our concerns. We had reviewed the landscape plan, which is sheet 5 of 11. It's very responsive to anything we said earlier. The only comment we do have, however, relates to a fence. There's only, the bill, the four buil, the four-unit building does have a chain link fence behind it. We did suggest, if the applicant or the board wants to, to put a, a solid fence back there because it's only 10 feet from the, from the property line, and there are, there is, there are residences, there is residence in, in the back of that, so it would be more consistent with what the board's been doing over the years to try to screen, to screen properties. The applicants gave us a memo dated March 6th, or gave you a memo dated March 6th, was, was responsive to any of our earlier comments. It was mentioned about the letter to Shippo regarding the archaeology, their identification of an archaeological survey. You submitted, the applicant submitted a letter. I don't know if you've heard back yet, but if they don't have a problem with it, we surely don't have a problem with doing an archaeological survey. That's, we don't need it if they don't want it. Actually, the one other comment that we did want to make, and it's really Rick's call, the the village board is considering a water quality protection overlay zone or regulation. And the board has turned it back to its special counsel and our office to re, review or revise the draft. The site would be subject to that, but given the current timing, the village board's current timing, it may not be applicable. I'll leave that to Rick to make a comment about that. And you mentioned you had the Part Two. Normally, municipality fills out the Part Two of CER. If Kelly doesn't have an issue with the applicant having done it, we, we don't have any issue.
We have it from...
Oh, you did it for them?
Kelly, yeah, Kelly.
Oh, you did it?
March 5th. We have March 5th, Part Two.
Okay.
I guess I didn't note that.
Then we did what we said we would do.
We tried.
Okay.
Okay, Madam Chairman, that's all we have.
Okay, thank you. Rick? Thoughts, concerns, before I go to the board members?
Sure, just two things. One, with respect to the watershed quality protection overlay, proposed local law. As Stu said, it's not applicable now, so this project does not have to comply with it. However, the applicant should keep themselves aware of it because it will apply to them if it goes into effect prior to them actually not only by approval time, but even after approval if they don't vest under the common law of New York to have certain things happen to the land by that time. So if they get an approval, for instance, and not much happens on the site, and the law goes into effect, they're going to be subject to that. So they may then have to come back to the board if they need modifications to their plan based upon that local law. Right now, there is no so-called grandfathering of any projects in the local law. That could change before it's adopted. But it's really nothing that this board has to be concerned about. If it does subsequently become applicable to them, they won't be able to get their permits from Gary, and they'll have to come back here and make any necessary changes that would be required. The second part is with respect to the Part Two. We submitted a Part Two for this project for the board's review. There were no moderate or large impacts. There were some small impacts that were noted. If you look on the Part Two, there are a, a number of these items, questions of Part Two. There are small arrows. Those arrows mean that it's, in our opinion, a small impact rather than no impact. There's no arrow. We believe that there's no impact. But it's for this board to determine whether or not they agree with our assessment of that. And then this board has to, consistent with CER, determine whether or not they want to make a determination of significance as a negative declaration based upon this, or whether or not they believe that additional information by way of an expanded Part Three is required for any particular issues that you believe need to be explored further.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to start with Robert. Thoughts, concerns, questions for the consultants and the applicant?
Should we go over the Part Two with the arrows, or?
We, we can do that if you want. Does the board want to go through Part Two? Hello? You have a copy of the Part Two?
I do not yet, no. I, it's okay.
I would, I need mine, so...
You can have mine. I didn't, I didn't write on this one, so...
Dennis has two, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dennis. All right, so on page, first page, Part Two, Identification of Potential Project Impacts. There is one little arrow on the proposed action may result in increased erosion whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, in parentheses, including from treatment by herbicides, and it's, no, we're small impact.
The arrow means that it would be... The arrow means that in our opinion, there would be a small impact rather than no. If there's no arrow, it was, on our opinion, it'd be no.
Do you have any problems with that one?
No.
Is there anyone in particular, anyone has a question with, before I go through all of them? This is like, there's about 20 or so.
I would suggest that you satisfy yourself with regard to the section on floodplain. That's the only, item number five, impact on flooding.
Page three.
Other than that, I think they've just identified small impacts all over. But even here, the questions appear to be small, but you should take a look and make sure you're comfortable with it.
All right, so on page three of 10, number five, impact on flooding. The first five are, have little arrows there. The proposed action may result in development in designated floodway. Do you want to go? Kelly, take it away, please. Excuse the microphone.
Typically, what happens is if there's a lot that have little arrows, you just look at it, and if there's any that you have a specific question on, either myself, Rick, or Dennis can respond as to why we, and Stu, respond as to why we answered it in that fashion.
Do you have any questions with those five?
No.
No.
Sandy? Okay. I guess we're, we agree with the attorney then. Okay, and then, impact on plants and animals, there's two there on page four. On page six, impact on aesthetic resources, there's a first five already. Anyone have any questions with that? Sandy, you're good? Okay. Number 15, impact on noise, odor, and mud. Um, number fifteen, impact on noise, odor, and light. The proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation. Why would you notate that?
That's typically just during construction.
Oh, during construction?
Sorry, that's typically just temporary and during construction.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Board members, any other questions with the little arrows?
Nope.
All right. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Sandy?
No.
Chris?
No.
Okay. Then I'm going to ask my questions on ARB. Did you happen to bring any samples or not?
I did. I, yes, I did.
The board, the board should see that if we're, if we're going to schedule a public hearing. Um, but before I look at the ARB, I have, on March eighth, it says, first floor plan on the left corner, it says Knoxville three, but it says crawl space. I guess that, I guess that was a mistake?
No, no, we're, we have to propose crawl spaces. Um, we cannot have a full foundation in order to comply with, um.
But why would you show me a living room and dining room with a crawl space?
Um, hold on a second, let me get the plan out.
That's what I'm confused at. I can confuse easily here.
Marie, if I can just go back, just for a second, um, with respect to the EAF, while he's looking at that.
Okay.
Um, if the board wants to adopt the part two as set forth, we could do that. And also, if you feel comfortable, um, with making a determination of significance based upon that part two of a neg deck, and believe that there's no need for an expanded part three or an EIS, you could also do that this evening.
Neg deck, and significance, okay. All right, so.
So, there's a, a particular layout for the Knoxville three, um, if the foundation is constructed with a crawl space, or if it's a full foundation that would have a full basement. So, this is, this is not a, this is not construction in the crawl space.
Chris, can you put your paper down? Thank you.
This is the first floor.
Thank you.
The crawl space would be underneath the first floor. So, it's describing the type of foundation that would go along with this particular floor layout.
Okay.
And we're proposing a crawl space, um, foundation, or essentially, you know, frost wall with a slab on top and maybe some other, you know, connection to the footings because we, we don't want to construct basements in an area that's prone, prone to flooding. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be prudent.
Okay. So, and also?
Yeah, we are, and we are allowing the crawl space to, to flood. We'll have knockouts so water can flow through it, right?
If they did not do that, then they would have a problem with their net area calculation for the fill. So, allowing it to flood in that space, they don't have to offset that by removal of some fill in the floodplain. That still remains part of the floodplain.
Okay. Um, my question to you on, then, on the elevations, the right side and the left side, which would be facing Falkirk, there'll be no windows on them. There's only windows on the, on the front and the back.
Uh, correct. That's as it's shown right now, correct, yes.
Just want to make sure, all right. So, this all goes, so this is all good here. So, these I can toss away, right? I don't need these. That's the old ones, and this is the old one?
Correct.
Beautiful. Done. Like, will I do that? All right, so, hey, boom, done, out. Um, so on ARB, we have roof color, Owens Corning. We have the Onyx Black, which we saw previously with the pre-prior applicant.
Yes.
We're, and it says, um, all right, hold on a second here. The style should be arch dash shake, but you have earth tone colors underneath that, but you have, the style is Onyx Black.
Uh, let me.
Take a look at that.
Yeah.
That could always be revised and.
I think earth tone colors is supposed to be the exterior walls.
It could be.
Is it the way it was spaced when it was typed? Is it, yeah?
So, earth tone colors are the.
Well, the hardy plank, you have it as gray slash beige slash terracotta. Are those considered earth tone colors?
Well, they're shown here on the, um, essentially, the, the renderings we have here. So, these would be the colors you're, you're looking at, that you're probably going to be seeing on the buildings.
All right, so then I'm going to presume, Rick, that where it says earth tone colors, in parentheses, it's gray slash beige slash terracotta. Okay? And then, where it says color for the roof, arch dash shake should be flipped over with Onyx Black.
Correct.
Okay. And you have the hardy plank, which is what you showed us before.
Correct.
Board members, you need to see those colors? The gray, beige, and terracotta?
No.
But I had a question on that, on the one with four. Is that green going to be on the one with four?
Right there?
Yeah.
Um, can you repeat the colors that were listed over there?
There were only three, gray, beige, and terracotta.
Um, we can incorporate that. If, if, if that's something the board likes in terms of a color.
I just didn't know because one has three, one has four. So, are you going to repeat a color on four?
I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt for you to submit it?
Yeah, we can do that. I think it would make sense to have a, rather than have a repeat, repeat color on the four units to actually incorporate, and that does fall within earth tone colors.
All right, so you're going to add green?
Yes.
Kelly, Rick, you got that?
Well, I, I think the applicant should resubmit the ARB.
He's going to resubmit this?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then, um, now, some of, with the hardy plank, you say smooth, but some of the color renderings has smooth, and then it looks like shakes.
There, yeah, we did decide to put some. So, the color renderings were done just about the same time we submitted the ARB. We probably had the color renderings done and had the ARB application submitted first. We made some changes that we thought would be appropriate to the renderings that we submitted. Um, we think that it would look good to have some of the shake look on some of the dormer areas over there to break up the, um, otherwise architectural monotony of it. So, we can, we can edit that ARB application, I think, to include the, uh, the architectural shake also in the eaves.
And then I guess on the one overhang, it looks like a metal roof instead of a shake?
We looked at that, yeah. We looked at potentially some type of a copper or metal roof, so we can incorporate that in there also.
So, you need to add that to your ARB?
Yes, we'll do, yep.
Copper roof, let me just put that in here. Board members, you're okay with like the three and four different style colors?
It's a metal, it's the color.
Yeah. I'm just asking about the.
Roofs?
No, the roof, like, the four, the four-unit building, it's showing four different colors.
Correct.
All next to each other. It's, it's one, it's one building. You're okay with four different colors?
Yes.
Okay. Sandy? Chris?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Also update the form with respect to that copper section.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay. All right, and we have the Anderson double hung windows, white, and on glare, and the trim, party board trim, PVC, white. Okay. All right, so I'm, as long as you resubmit a revised.
Yes, not a problem.
Mary, as I understand it, Mike, the, the governing thing right now is your photo rendering. So, you're going to be modifying.
The ARB to match that.
To match the, the photos, okay.
Okay.
And only some have panel shutters, huh?
What's that?
Only some, only some of them have the shutters, right?
Right. They don't, they don't all have shutters. So, I guess, is this going to be determined, like, this, you're going to build this as is, and then whoever wants to rent them, they don't get to pick the colors?
No.
Okay.
Correct.
So, whatever you want to do with the.
Correct.
Yeah, because like the, the second page, it has the four with the green.
Yeah, we're, we're not building to own, so, right.
Yeah, there's some shutters, and some of them don't have it.
And some are gray, and the gray one has gray shutters.
Yeah. Well, you're not going to do gray shutters, right? You're just going to do.
No, they should all be black. It might be more or less, um, I, I have to take a look at which one you're looking at, but it's, maybe it's the way the rendering was created in terms of the light that was shown on the.
Yeah. I don't know, it looks gray. It looks gray, but that's all right. As long as you, as, once the ARB application.
That one, yeah.
Matches the other.
I can modify that to show it being a little darker, if that's.
As long as it just matches.
I mean, if you want to put.
Yes.
If you want to put black slash gray on there as well, to leave it open to the.
That's fine, yeah. Give some flexibility.
Just flexibility and add it on there, just so your bases are covered.
Yep.
All right. All right, with all that being said, board members, let's, before I forget, let's make a motion for this, um, declare this a significant, do what you said, just, I can't read my own writing, Rick.
You can, the, the thing to do is, is that you should, if you agree with it, adopt part two of the EAF. And then, secondly, to either give it a negative declaration if you're satisfied, or if you believe that you need further study on any issue to discuss that and potentially have an expanded part three. But if you're satisfied with the part two as it is and believe that it doesn't raise any potentially significant adverse environmental impacts, then it would be appropriate for you to do a negative declaration.
I just didn't write the word adopt before. That's it. Do I have a motion from the board members to adopt part two as reviewed and submitted by our attorney?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do I have, I'll, all for a motion to declare this a negative declaration? Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's done. Does the board members all feel that we can move forward to a public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, Dennis, next meeting would be April eighteenth, or we'd have to go into May?
Well, if we, if this is going to be a joint public hearing with the site plan and the, um, ARB, uh, there's a requirement the applicant have the materials submitted so that we can do our reports. Uh, we can extend that a little bit to this Friday, but if, Mike, if you can't get the ARB stuff in by Friday, then we probably have to push it out the other meeting. If you can, I think we can list it on the eighteenth.
I think mostly what we're talking about is revising just the actual application itself, so I think I can probably do that.
Okay.
Probably, they'll probably be faxed over tonight, tomorrow morning, right?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
You should also have the samples available for the public hearing in case the public wants to.
Yep, I have them here tonight, and I'll bring them again.
Does board members want to see the color samples, or the color renderings are okay?
They're fine.
They're fine? Okay. All right, then I'll offer a motion that we schedule a public hearing for April eighteenth, barring no STOES norms.
A second.
And, until authorized, the attorney to draft a resolution of approval.
You want me to second it again?
Sure.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm being funny. You don't know what the weather's going to be. All right.
Thanks for your time, Senator.
All right, you're done now, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll see you on the eighteenth. And please get that paper out to them.
Will do.
All right. Next item, CV properties, review revised site plan, EAF, and traffic study, submitted, wait, I lost my, for the proposed construction of a two-story mixed-use building and parking lot. Expansion set property is located at two fifty-two Route thirty-two in Central Valley, and is known on the Village of Waverly tax maps as section two three zero block seven lot seventeen through nineteen. Did we forget to invite my traffic consultant, or did I tell him to stay home?
Madam Chair, I'm going to recuse myself from this application.
Okay. He's got a beard. He doesn't, don't recognize him.
I thought I, he may forgot about the meeting. It could be, I'd have to check my emails, because I know I had a correspondence with John.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm good, thank you. How are you?
I'm fine. I have to check my email, see what I told Mr. Collins. Have a good night, Mike. All right, do you want to?
Ready?
Tell us where we are and what we're doing. Actually, let me just note for, on March seventh, we received a memo for Steve Esposito. March fourteenth, we received a report from Nelson Pope and Vorus, and on March fifteenth, from H two M, a report. Other than that, you can, you can go for it.
Okay, uh, for the, just a quick recap on the project. Uh, it's a mixed-use project. It's located in the, in the Hamlet Business District, HB District. Uh, the site is located at the intersection of Estrada Drive, Estrada Road and Route seven.
That my phone?
Route seven, Route thirty-two. Uh, it's the mixed-use building downstairs. It's going to be, again, mixed-use in the HB zone. Uh, there's plenty of uses that are permitted, retail, office, service businesses, uh, and where, the first floor is eighty-six hundred square feet. Uh, the second floor will be strictly residential. Uh, there'll be four two-bedroom apartments and four one-bedroom apartments. Uh, we're proposing parking, parking is in the back of the buildings, and the site also has on there is the existing TD Bank Building, which is twenty-four hundred square feet, currently under renovations. Uh, we've been before the board for a while reviewing this plan. Uh, we've also been through the zoning board of appeals, because there was a, um, a conflict in the front yard setback between the HB zone and, uh, the general code, uh, which the, uh, zoning board appealed, opine, or zoning board of appeals opined that, um, the bulk table, which regulates the HB zone, took precedent for a front yard setback. Uh, and we've been responding to comments throughout the process, and, uh, hopefully tonight we can move things forward. We are also, we also have a, uh, application still, uh, pending with the zoning board of appeals regarding the lot area, uh, but we have to conclude CER before we can, uh, go back to the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you. And I'm going to have to apologize to board because Phil and I corresponded on a different project, and I don't know why he wasn't copied on this to be here tonight. So, we'll have to deal with the traffic as best we can. Dennis, would you like to help us out here with your comments?
Okay, uh, yes, as Steve mentioned, this has been before you a few, a few times. We've had ESOs meetings on this, discussed this. We've identified some variances that are required. Uh, this has gone to the ZBA, and, uh, CER must be concluded before the ZBA can take certain actions. Uh, nevertheless, even though it, it requires ZBA action, uh, the applicant has submitted plans. We have commented on those plans to try to give them a heads up in terms of what the planning board might be looking for, and we might be looking for in terms of technical requirements. Uh, we have identified those variances for use and density and for, um, parking, but, um, don't recall if that's.
Uh, no, if you recall, the traffic, in the traffic report, uh, we, uh, did a track, a parking analysis, and it was concluded by both our consultant and your consultant that the parking, uh, as proposed, uh, meets the maximum peak demand, uh, for weekend and, and daytime parking.
There's a waiver that's permitted. Uh, actually, it doesn't meet the requirements of the code, but there's a practical analysis to that, and there's a opportunity for the board, that's why I was asking about, whether there's a waiver provision, and there is a waiver provision for the board to act on that if both the applicant make a good case and you or your consultant can make a recommendation to you that it would be adequate. But nevertheless, they do require a density variance. Um, we have gone over the site plan. We have made recommendations. Uh, we've met with your ESOs. Um, they have made some comments, but there's, uh, they're satisfied, I believe. Uh, your ESOs felt it was reasonable access. Um, we've talked a number of times about the loading zone. The applicant has given you information regarding how a Hamlet business, in their opinion, uh, reacts to, um, uh, receiving deliveries, and they've proposed something on their plan for a loading area and to provide access, uh, to the, uh, the proposed stores and the retail development portion of it. Um, on utilities, we really have no further comments other than on stormwater. Uh, we have noted that, uh, it is not of a design that we would normally use. Uh, it requires that, uh, when you plow snow, snows pile along the sides, and for the drainage to work, it has to flow to the center of the lot, which we find can create problems with icing. I think there are solutions for that. I think the applicant's considering that, and hopefully they'll be able to come up with a solution on that one. Um, they have provided, uh, water quality calculations. We made some comments on that. Um, as far as landscape and lighting, I'm not going to go into that detail. I think, uh, Stu will handle that. The only thing we do is, we, we've made a recommendation that you follow your standard procedures, that the lighting be generally limited to zero point one foot candles at the property line, although we believe there can be some variance for that for access ways and for areas along the highway. Um, and that there be no glare on adjacent site properties. They have given you information on signs and some details on that. Um, it's going to be a function of the market, but they. It's going to be a function of the market, but they've given you some designs which I think in generic terms provide a pleasing sign package, but you should review that and make sure under your ARB that that's going to be satisfactory. They have advised you that their architectural renderings that they provided you back in 2016 are still under consideration, and I don't think they've changed that. And I think that's about it. There was an easement in front. I think that they can... What they're proposing... There's an easement that's in favor of the DOT in the front of their property, but... And they have some improvements on it, but the type of improvements that they have there are tip... I think would typically be allowed within an easement area there. There's generally paving or landscaping or something along those lines that would be permitted in that easement area. I did not see a prohibit... Prohibition to that. And I think that's all that we had, unless there's any comments. And eventually, this will be required to have a public hearing, but I think right now the focus is to take action on SEACR. And quite frankly, the lone element that was out there, in my opinion, in terms of your making a decision on SEACR, although it's all subject to the board's review, is the traffic issue. That I really don't... From my opinion regarding water, sewer, utilities, drainage, I don't see anything arising to the level of a significant impact here. However, you have a special consultant that's reviewing traffic, and I think you need to hear on that. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Yeah. We have very little left. And I don't know... Do you not have our last report? Is that what you were... Oh. I can give you the... But I have it highlighted, so I want to have it for a minute. He has it now. Okay. Actually, there's really... We know that we need the ZBA here. The applicant has been very responsive in terms of moving some auto space... Auto parking spaces away from the... Is it the Castro along the boundary? There is still one space that would require a variance if they can move it. That's one less variance they have to worry about, but we did identify it as a spot that needs a variance. And similarly with the fence, we had suggested that the fence be extended to make sure that the Castro property is protected, because it's one of those areas that... Where you have a commercial bound, you know, up against the residential area. We said much earlier on, by the way, just in passing, that this kind of development is very much consistent with the comprehensive plan. We think it's a good idea, and if we resolve all of the other smaller issues. The landscaping plan is very robust, as Steve always does. And I think that's it. The... You know, early on, the SEACR coordination had been accomplished, but we'll defer to the attorney, because as we've all been saying, the traffic seems to be the one issue that's still outstanding before you can make a SEACR determination. But the ZBA can't act until you do that.
Thank you. To say that... All my consultants, none of the emails have my traffic consultant copied on the emails. I need to have everyone to remember to include my traffic consultant, and I don't have it where the building department forwarded to him. I have to apologize to the applicant that I don't have him here tonight. To say I'm upset about it... So I apologize to you for that, with that delay. I will make sure that if we have to, we'll have you on the next meeting. First item on the agenda, if we need to. But I'll discuss that later.
Maria, we, on the 7th, as part of our submission, is we had responded to Mazur's consulting comments on their last...
Right. Because they did send out something on February 16th.
Yeah.
That's the latest report I have.
Yes, they did.
That's right. And then the applicant responded to that PDE, and I guess that the...
But he didn't know about the meeting tonight.
And I don't know whether or not he knew about the March 7th letter.
Right.
Because, I mean, if this March 7th letter answers all of his questions, then that would answer it.
Yep.
But I don't know that you can answer that without a response letter from him.
So we apologize for not having notified him.
Yeah. So I have...
I apologize.
I apologize, because I didn't catch it that it wasn't... He wasn't copied on any of this with the agenda. So... But we'll take care of that. And Rick, do you have anything to say about this application?
No. Again, as everybody else said, the offsetting issue is traffic. If you... If our traffic consultant is fine with this March 7th, then you could go ahead and proceed to a negative declaration.
Does anyone have a copy of his report? Do you want to review it? Or Dennis, do you want to take a stab at it?
Well, I have Providence's response.
You don't have Mazur's response on the 16th?
I haven't.
Oh, that's a... I mean, after the 7th, there was no comments? I'm sorry. February 16th.
February 16th, and then Providence responded on March 7th.
Right. And we didn't get anything back from...
Right. So that what you really need is your Mazur's response or reply to the March 7th Providence Design Engineering memo. And it may be... I don't know that he has to be here if that memo is simply everything's fine, given that March 7th response.
Yeah.
But the board doesn't have that at this time.
We don't have that. All right. Board members, let me start with Chris. Do you have any questions for our consultants that are here tonight?
You mean Robert?
I said... Oh, Chris. Sandy. I'm... I am a little upset. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Steve, I just had a question. Well, I have a couple of questions, but that... The fence.
The fence has been extended. We extended it... This submission, that fence has been extended down to Estrada Drive. We kept it off the edge of pavement about 10 feet for site distance purposes, but it's almost all the way to the property line.
Okay. And does that go all the way along to the last property? To Edward's property?
Starts at Estrada Drive, right... Ends, just like I said, about 10 feet from the edge of pavement.
Okay.
Goes all along this property line, all the way around, up to here.
Yeah. So that's Edward's.
Yeah.
All right. And then, I guess, I just...
So you did that.
Okay. Oh, I thought Dennis was saying something. Just... I'm interested in what our consultant has to say about the traffic. That last... On the... What is it? November 29, 17th, from the DOT? That last paragraph about additional comments? Oh, the DOT letter? Yeah. The DOT letter. Just talking about depending on delays, making the north exit and only right turn onto Route 32 North. I want to make sure that that's put to bed and that everybody's satisfied. That's from December, right? Is that the December one? We received it December 4th.
There's been a subsequent one from the DOT. You should have it. It's March 12th. We've... Since that applicant... Since that letter, we had...
Did you get a copy?
We've submitted what's called a perm 33. That's the work permit for the DOT. Our traffic study, site plans, all the documents that you've received, they received... The department received it as well. And then they had a review letter dated March 12, 2018, with about six bullet points. Most of it technical in nature with regard to the...
We don't have that letter.
You don't have that letter?
No.
Gee. You were copied. I'll send you a copy.
What was it? March 12th?
Uh, March 12th.
Can you send it to Maria, please?
Yeah.
And can you also make sure that Providence, their report from March 7th? Can you follow up that they actually sent this report to Mazur?
Well, our procedure is that we submit it to the building department, but we can... I will make sure that John has a copy of it.
As a courtesy, could you please make sure that Mazur has it? That's all I have. Okay. Robert?
I was just going to ask about the DOT also, whether there was anything definitive that they said about it yet.
Basically, in their March 12th comment letter, it just talks about some technical issues with the analysis, some data, you know, stuff, but we're preparing a response to that. So our next submission to this board will be the response... You'll get a copy of the response to the DOT as well.
Okay. You know what? If you can forward that response letter again to our building department and ask Maria to send it to all our consultants, including Mr. Collins, and then you can even ask her to forward out the report from March 7th from Providence, so that you don't have to do it.
We'll do it. It's a push of the button.
Whatever... At this point, Dennis?
Yes.
If we get all these reports, can we put him on first for April 18th meeting?
Sure. For SEACR action?
SEACR action and traffic.
For a discussion with your consultant and then action.
Yep. They're first on the agenda. If I forget, remind me. I have no other comments. Unfortunately, we can't move forward on anything else. So we'll see you on the 18th.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
With my apologies again.
Maria, just to let you know, this may not affect the applicant. We put him on the 18th. I think the ZBA is the third Thursday?
No.
Second.
Is it the second?
Second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday.
So they'll be...
Okay. Never mind.
Are you before the ZBA next week?
No. We're not going to apply back to them until we conclude SEACR.
Right.
So if we're on the 18th and the neg deck is passed...
Maybe we can ask the chairperson to make an exception from our meeting, because I know she's in the audience somewhere tonight. Maybe she'll...
I think we might be okay calendar-wise.
She might work with us on this one. She's somewhere here. Okay. Shops at Woodbury.
Sure.
You may have left.
I needed some water.
Okay. I thought you left. Um...
I didn't get the... I didn't get the memo or the email, so...
Don't start with me, Chris. Um...
There's so many buttons to push.
Don't push my buttons right about now, because they're beyond. I just want to preface for the people at home who are going to see this meeting, if they so desire to watch it. This is the first time this applicant is before us. There is nothing approved. We have... We're going to be learning everything there is tonight for the first time. So anyone that's out there, this is the first time that we're looking at this application, and we... There's nothing has been approved or definitive with that note.
Correct. Just for... For those of you, you're fairly familiar with this site. We refer to this as the Cabela's site. It's located on Avril Avenue or Route 17.
Losi Lane.
Losi Lane is in the middle here. Chuck's Gas Station is right here. And this was the southbound ramp to the 131 original design, which is no longer proposed by the DOT. 17 is here. So during the Cabela's process, there was this state, in order to implement their original plans, had a taking of land from the site. And that occurred probably about a year and a half ago. And basically, it was about 2.3 acres. There was a corner here that they took. There was a piece in the back here that they took, and another little piece here totaling all but, I think, 2.3, 2.4 acres. And a more recent note, after Cabela's had pulled the plug on the project, my client bought it at the end of last year. We were contacted by the DOT, and what they had originally done in the 131 plans was to propose a park and ride somewhere in this general area of the site. If you recall, there was an existing hotel here, Budget Hotel, which has been... Was demolished during the initial phases of construction for Cabela's. But they wanted to revisit putting that park and ride on the site. And what they did... What we worked with them and came up with a design that, you know, didn't impact our ability to develop the land, and then they could still provide a park and ride for about 200 spaces. It did...
They're not taking that?
They did.
They did take it.
They took it. So as part of the 131 ramp is there... And that's if you look right now, they're actually there building that. That's one of their staging areas, and they're building it as we speak. Well, not right now as we speak, but tomorrow.
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM. So, you know, the site, as it... When we initially started this process, it was 13.6 acres. After the two takings, the total site area is 9.1 acres. You know, sadly, I mean, just for the community, I mean, you know, the state really whittled down a very cash pot, potentially a very cash positive site. But we're down to 9.1 acres. And what the current applicant is proposing is two uses. The first use is a commercial center. And a commercial center is permitted in the IB zone. The only criteria that you have to have is you have to have more than one permitted or specially permitted uses from the HB zone, the Hamlet zone. So that's retail, restaurant, those types of commercial uses that are permitted in your HB zone. At least more than one of those have to be proposed for this project. And that's how we developed... That's how we proceeded with Cabela's site. If you recall, we had a retail facility, which was Cabela's, and then we had two restaurants that we had two uses that were permitted in the HB zone. With this particular site, we have the commercial center, which is consisting of retail shops, standalone restaurants to make up that... Make up the center. But we're also proposing a hotel, which is also a permit... A special permit use in the IB zone. We first made application... We made an application to the Zoning Board of Appeals for an interpretation, which is we adjourned after developing our sites a little bit more. But the initial interpretation... Or the initial application to the ZBA was for an interpretation about lot area, because commercial centers are not subject to minimum lot areas. So we felt... But the hotel is not a permitted use... Is not a permitted use in the HB zone. So our question was, if commercial use are underlying permitted or special uses permitted in a commercial or business... Commercial business district. So we actually adjourned the meeting, because we identified that we're likely going to need a couple more area variances to implement this plan. So instead of going back and forth, we thought... And it would also require a coordinated review under SEACR, is that we adjourned our public... Or adjourned our meeting with the ZBA, our application with the ZBA, and made application to this board. And tonight, we're here for really two things. One is for you to declare your intent to be lead agency under SEACR for this application, and also to refer us to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I know that Dennis had outlined some... Identified some of the areas that we would be seeking relief from by the ZBA, and we And we concur with his, his findings and we think that there's probably one more interpretation that would also need to be made.
Okay. Now, I have a question for you. On the application to the planning board?
Yep.
You show that the property owner is the Shops at Woodbury LLC.
Correct.
You signed it as the property owner. We don't have an LLC form on file. So I need that form going forward, if you can get that to us by the next...
Not a problem. We'll get that out to you tomorrow.
And then give us a revised...
Yep.
...application. And the, from the taking from New York State DOT, have they not, the county's still showing that you own, well, not you personally, that the applicant owns 12.2 acres. That was, I pulled this off as of last night. They don't show the revision of the acres.
Let me, uh...
So, and also, I just want to make sure with the numbers because I know you have on your application 9.1 acres, but the county's showing higher yet.
Yeah, the county's probably showing, yeah, what they're showing is the original taking. They, the state, and interestingly how this all happens, but the state notified my client like two days prior to the closing that they were taking, they were closing on, on the 2.13 acres, which is the park and ride. And if you look on your plan, the, just the parking lot, the park, the stripes that are in red, that's the DOT parking area, the park and ride. And so it happened very quickly and in fact, they took title. And I'm not surprised that the county is not up to speed on that.
Okay, with that being said, Rick, how come upstairs doesn't know about it? The assessor's office, wouldn't they need to know that the town has lost property to New York State and it's off the tax rolls per se?
They, they should know that, but I mean, they rely upon county records. County records traditionally, there's a lag from when something is filed to when it actually gets recorded.
Okay.
And so the assessors contact the county and rely upon information that they have. They can also, if they know about something else, they can ask about it if they need to make a decision at any particular point in time. But I, I think this is nothing more than there's a delay from, sometimes it's been up to a month or so or more. Six to eight weeks with respect to when you file something with the county and when it actually shows up in the county records.
Well, interestingly enough, the state has the ability to take land and not file a map. So I can...
Yes.
So they, that's probably why the county's a little bit behind on this is because traditionally, there would be a subdivision map and you would file that with the county clerk's office and then that starts the whole ball rolling with tax, real, real property and tax department. This is, the state...
And that would have gone, subdivision should have come through us.
Correct, unless you're the state of New York, right.
So that, and Rick, I need, I'm asking you as an attorney, please follow up with the mayor and let him know what has happened because he'll, he needs to know that that occurred, the taking, and it's, didn't come through the planning board, if you could do that, please.
Sure. Yeah, I will.
I'm sorry, but I'm a stickler for little things like that.
Not a problem.
It's, well, not when the mayor finds out. So it's 30, 9.1. We did receive the full EAF Part 1. On March 15th, we received reports from H2M and NP and V. Can someone ask Maria to make sure that this application gets to our traffic consultant? Because he needs to be on this as well.
Well, who do you want it to go to, Maria?
It's Mazur, our traffic consultant. He is, he is, they are it. So he's, he's not here tonight.
Maria?
Yes, sir.
Dressing to John Collins at Mazur or...
John Collins or Phil Greeley. If Maria, Maria, yeah, either one. Maria can, Dennis, you'll let her know? Thank you.
Well, if we're sending, we can send, we can send both of them.
Thank you. Okay, I'm just realizing he's, be nice, Maria. Going forward, are we going to have a revised map not showing the old ramp behind the property or are we...
Yeah, what you'll see, we just put that on there for display purposes, sort of history of where, how the site got into the configuration that it's in now. Those, those, you know, future, or previous improvements or proposed improvements will be taken off the map.
While you're at it, Dennis, if you can let Maria know, or Natalie, whoever's going to be sending out the memo tomorrow. Going forward on any application before the board with this application, that the Village of Harriman mayor and the planning board is aware of this project? Especially when it comes down to, in the future, when there's any public hearings, because I saw Mayor Welly yesterday.
Well, water, they'll be providing water service, so they'll definitely be involved in that. I'm not sure of the distance, the distance, they may be under 239 AN or whatever it is.
But I just want to make sure that we keep...
We've, we've met with, we've met with...
I know you have, but I want to make sure from our end that we are reaching out to them as a good neighbor. I don't want to...
Okay.
All right, and then... I would like to offer a motion that we have the intent to be lead agency and have our attorney's office prepare that paperwork.
Second it.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, if you want the motion to be referred to the ZBA also?
Please.
I'll make that motion. If I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or any, or, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, with all that being said, I'm going to start with Chris, since you're back. Do you have any thoughts, concerns, or questions for the applicant on this project?
No, it's a great project.
Sandy? I, I, I know I completely skipped the consultants right now, I'm, because I'm still calming down, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm, I'm totally confused about a few things. Okay, on the map, on the plan, buildings three and four look like they're one building. Buildings three and four up on the top, right?
Correct.
They're one building.
They are, we label them as, as Building Three and Four because they're slated for a particular user.
One structure, two occupancies?
Yes.
Then how come Building Eight has four occupancies, but it's just one building?
That's more of a spec building right now. It's going to be, just, it's going to be in line retail. It could be, those walls could be anywhere depending on the end user.
Okay. Because the tables, the, on the site table, the, the building area square footage of 57,000, that's wrong, right?
No, that's correct.
Well, when I add it up, it comes out to 59,276 and I know, I think when Stu or, yeah, when Stu...
Stu's report noted a difference.
There's a difference. If you add up those numbers, it doesn't, it comes up to 59,276.
It's even better.
So, well, what I'm curious as, the coverage, the coverage is already at 75 percent, so does that change the coverage?
I'll have to look into that. I don't know. But one of the things that we are going to be going to the Zoning Board of Appeals for is development coverage.
Okay, I, but I just, I want that brought up, if you don't mind.
Yep.
It seems like there's an awful lot of variances needed for this and, I mean, my biggest concern is that it's an overuse of the property. It's like you're trying to squeeze so much in and then with that hotel, I'm not really sure, are you planning on being able to use the commuter parking as well?
Yeah, right now...
For any of these uses?
Right now, and what we'll do, you know, as part of this process is, you know, along with our traffic study, we're going to do a parking analysis. We think that based on the proposed uses, that there's going to be, there's adequate parking, you know, for what's being proposed.
Without the commuter parking?
Without the commuter parking.
Okay.
Right now, we're, I think we're like 32 or 34 spaces below what would be required based on the square footage, which is less, less than a seven, 6 percent reduction in par, in required parking. Your, this board has the ability to waive up to 25 percent of required parking if we show that what's being proposed is adequate. So we don't think it's a stretch, you know, for, because of the, just the way the hotel works versus the way retail works and the way restaurants work. So we think that there'll be more than enough parking here.
But when you, to go to your other project, when you said it was going to be driven by the market, will this be driven by the market? Or are you looking to have, like, Building One's, right now you say Restaurant. Are, is, is that always going to be a restaurant or if the market doesn't pan out?
Right now, they're being marked, they're, it's on the market for these types of, these uses. And we're designating those, that square footage, assigning certain parking spaces with that square footage. But yes, but ultimately, you know, like any commercial endeavor, the market will determine what ultimately gets built.
But that's, I guess that's what I'm driving at. If it's, if it's still fluid, then the, the parking changes depending on the use, so...
Also, the parking, the way this, because you're on this topic, none of these buildings show where the dumpsters are going. None of these buildings are showing where deliveries are going.
Yeah, it's very vague.
There's no truck access, so something...
If I may, if you were to approve the mix that he has, they would be limited to the amount of restaurant space they've shown. That has a higher parking requirement. So if they took a restaurant and converted it to an office, if you allowed them to do that, or some other type of use that had a lesser requirement, then that could be part of your action. But your, your action, if, you know, when you finally got a full site plan, would be to limit certain uses. Restaurants could go no more than you've approved. Because to take another space and convert it to a restaurant would increase the parking, which they don't have.
Right.
So by virtue of whatever variances they, they receive, if they do receive variances or waivers from this board, you would be limiting the amount of the high parking uses by virtue of your action. So that's something you'll have to work out in the long run, but yeah, there would be limitations. They, they could switch walls for different retail uses. Because no matter what the retail uses are, if it's strictly in your code as a retail, that's so many spaces per thousand square feet. But when you switch over to a restaurant, it's per seat and it's a much higher density and much higher parking requirement.
Right, well, that's, I guess Building Eight is the one that I'm concerned about because you've got that restaurant squeezed in at 2,200 square feet. And that's, you know, what's to say that you're not going to blow out that wall and just increase it by another 4,700 square feet? And then where does the parking come?
Well, they, they wouldn't be able to. If you approved, if they, the first check on all of this is the application, what the applicant says they want you to approve. And assuming that you approve that or something modified, that's the second and final check on it. That is, if you approve a restaurant of so many square feet, that's all they can have. And if they want to have a larger restaurant, they'd have to come back here to you to have an amended site plan and prove that they had adequate parking, among other things, that would address that larger use.
But if they're going for, if they have to get some variances for parking, aren't there some variances they have to get for parking?
Well, we're not going to ask for, from the Zoning Board of Appeals for a variance for parking. We're likely going to ask the planning board.
For a waiver.
For a waiver, yes.
You have some leeway, in other words. It's not a straight mathematical aspect. You have the ability to waive. You could decide not to waive and that will also judge how much they can have. So you have the control, is what I'm saying.
Okay, I, I...
Once, yeah, once we get...
I would like to see more come...
Right, once we get more defined and...
You're going to see plenty of detail, but right now, we have some, some big picture thresholds that we kind of have to flush out to, to advance the plans. And it's really jurisdiction of the, of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Now, I know you mentioned Building Eight. I'm more concerned with Building Seven. That's a drive-through, isn't it?
Well, there's opening all the way around, so it looks like a drive-through.
Correct.
Okay. And that's a restaurant and it's required parking of 62, but you're only proposing 31. I don't know what type of...
That's what I'm saying, these variances are pretty substantial.
And there's no delivery drop-off in dumpsters, so I, I presume from what you're hearing from us, you're going to look at this and possibly a building may have to be squashed down quite considerably to include all delivery areas, dumpsters. Where are you putting the trucks, in the parking lot?
Well, our initial approach to this is to sort of, let's say, a generic approach in set thresholds. And then that's really what this plan is, is moving forward to. That's why we have the chart initially. You know, we're going to limit X number of square feet of, of, let's say, restaurant, fine dining, X number of square feet of restaurant, fast food, X number of square feet of retail. Each one of those is going to have to come back to this board for its own site plan, its own architectural review board. Because each, you know, each, if I'm a, whoever, you know, Charlie's Steakhouse, you know, we've got our color palette, we've got our, we've got our footprint, we've got our back of house, you know, requirements. We don't know that. We don't know who it's going to be. But what we can do is we can establish the number, the square, based on the square footage.
Square footage.
The number of, of square foot, square feet per use, as best we can tell, you know. And as, as the plan develops and as, and as tenants come forward, we can advance each one of those. You know, I, I see each one of those having their own mini site plan review, you know, once you have an end user. There's no other way around it. And you're going to, and again, it's going to be site plan and architectural review for each one of those little boxes.
All right, but, but before we can get there, you would have to tell, you, the square foot, the footprint, we would have to determine with...
And that's where this plan is moving towards, correct.
Okay, now, Sandy, do you have anything else?
Just the hotel, and I'm sorry because I was looking at some other stuff. The hotel... Is it, the way it's, this property is situated right now, that hotel doesn't have frontage on 1732, whatever you want to call it, or Avril?
The parcel does.
The parcel does, but...
It's all owned by the same person. The property is owned by the same person. It's the same thing that we had with, um...
Hampton Inn, it's the same thing.
The Hampton Inn and also Walmart. All those parcels are all...
It may not be the same thing exactly, but it's before the ZBA for interpretation, as I understand.
One of the interpretations that we're requesting, or going to request, is, is the frontage. It's our opinion that right now, we have 117 feet of frontage, either in fee or as, as of right by easement on...
Is that where the old commuter parking lot is?
No, where the, no, where the, where the main, where Losi Lane used to come in. So we're going to, we're going to have the Zoning Board of Appeals review that. And then ultimately, the existing park and ride is going to go away. And when that goes away, we've got thousands of feet of road frontage.
So when the existing one goes away, you, you own that property?
Excuse me?
When...
We, we'll border the right, we'll border the state right away.
And there'll be access, frontage on Route 32?
So this is going away?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all, that's answered it.
Okay.
Steve, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
When you add everything up, isn't this project, as you're proposing, it's significantly less than what Cabela's was approved for size-wise?
Oh, yeah, definitely. Cabela's was 94,000 square feet plus two 5,000 square foot pads. So we're, you know, roll over 110,000 square feet.
Okay.
And I believe less parking.
Do you want to say something before I go to consultants and then I'll...
Yeah. Steve, is it possible the state can make further modifications and take more property or change its, its plans? I mean, they surprised us a few months ago with, you know, whole new design.
Good question. I would hope for the community's sake that they don't take any more land from this particular site. Like I said, I think it's a potentially, you know, cash positive site, you know, for the community. And that they're, but, we, the best we can tell, they're happy with their 200 cars. That was part of their original plan. And they, you know, they, they, they're, they're consistent, at least there, with what they're, what the improvements they're making now.
So we really don't know, but it seems like they, they're pretty well set in what they're, they're planning to do then.
We believe so.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Dennis, I'm just going to ask you, or whoever can answer this. The traffic signal pole, where it says at the top where the commuter parking lot is, all the way at the top corner, that essentially is going to be where the crossover starts with northbound traffic, correct?
Uh, I've seen the crossover. I don't know exactly the location.
I believe that's where it's going to start crossing over, so... So I'm just curious as to where the buses are going to go in from that point at the top?
Oh, if you look at the, the current plan, the, you, the improvements for, let's call it Losi Lane, they're, they're part of that, they're part of this package.
I'm talking about the north, I'm talking about the north entrance.
Losi Lane.
No, above, above Losi Lane.
So, right here?
No, keep going all the way to the top, right there.
Oh, this one.
Yeah, that's the north, that's going to be the north, the start of the northbound crossover.
Right, so what's going to happen is this is only going to, this is going to be a right-in only. So it's, it's not an in and an out, so if you're...
How's it going to be a right-in if you're going north?
If you're, you can't.
If you're going north.
This is only accessible for southbound traffic. It's a, it's a right-in only.
And the state, all right, because I'm going to, I'm going to have to go back down there and look at that with the state then because that's going to be... Because if that's the case, if I'm going southbound, as a, as a person who lives here, I will take that route in to avoid the light down in front of Kohl's.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And that, so that's going to be a potential that our traffic consultant is going to have to look at and our consultants because that can become a point where people are going to try to cut and avoid a traffic light that's further south. And I don't know how we're going to take care of that entrance.
Speed bumps. Uh, yeah, that's, you know, again, that's not in our control. That's really DOT's control, but...
I know, but it's going to be a traffic issue with our consultant because, trust me, if I can avoid a traffic light, I'm taking it. And I'm sure everyone else in Woodbury would be doing the same thing.
Maybe.
Okay, I'm going to jump over to Dennis.
Sure.
I know I did things a little differently.
Well, I'm going to do things differently too. I'm going to be very brief. We identified some bulk... We identified some bulk and area variances, those are threshold issues, they have to go there, there's interpretations. I'm not going to try to repeat what Steve tried to say in terms of the use, because it's very complicated in terms of your code, referring back to the Hamlet Business Zone and leases permitted in the IB and all that sort of thing. So, I think the Z, it's properly before the ZBA to make interpretations. One thing I will note in here, that this does involve the Board of Trustees, because there was a property, a roadway, that ran through the center of this property, that, I think, was Melody Lane, and that-
No.
You think that was Losi?
Yeah, so, as part of the swap, the original swap with Cabela's was, Losi Lane was owned, owned by the state of New York. When they did the Route Six flyover, they took control of it, because they had to make the cul-de-sac and shorten it and all that. The state typically, after they make those improvements and the projects are closed out, they, they put that, they transfer that back to the municipality.
Right.
There is a letter on the file saying that they were going to do that, it never happened. So, they owned, the state of New York owned Losi Lane up to the cul-de-sac at the, you know, at the top of the site. There is a piece, when they also made the, the flyover, is a piece of Melody Lane, which is owned, which is like .4 acres, which is owned by the village of Woodbury. And during the Cabela's site development, there was an agreement and resolution passed by the village board that they would convey that land for a set price to Cabela's, you know, at substantial completion. Well, we never reached substantial completion. So we've met with, we've, met with a couple of members of the village board, we presented this plan and thought, and asked them if, would they still consider the transfer of that .4 acres of Melody Lane, if the site is developed in some form, or, you know, like this, and they, of course, it's a board action, and, you know, they can't speak for the board, but they would at least entertain a request. So, part of this site plan, or the ability to implement this site plan, would be the conveyance of that parcel.
Okay, that's my point exactly. Melody Lane, the portion of Melody Lane, not Losi Lane, the portion of Melody Lane that is owned by the Board of Trustees, as I understand it, the attorneys put a reverter clause in, that if the Cabela's didn't go that way, that it reverted back to the village board of trustees, the village. So the village has control over a portion of the site.
Yep.
I don't know any reason why they wouldn't deny it, but it's in their control, and it's their option as to whether they wish to convey that portion, so that the site plan can, can happen. That's, the applicant understands that, the applicant is taking the risk, they presuming that the village board of trustees is going to act as it did before. That may or may not be so, but it's on them, they can go to the ZBA, they can request their relief, if they obtain the relief, they'll come back here. You can even continue to, I think Rick and Kelly may chime in, but I think you can continue to review this, you're acknowledging it, they're acknowledging that they know this, and at some point, they would have to have that happen to develop the site plan the way they're proposing it. Other than that, there's nothing in the report that's, that's not shown on the plan, and that we haven't tried to identify, and I'll give the caveat that I always give, that this is a sketch plan, this is not a detailed plan, we've talked to them about that. From the plan that we have, we have tried to identify all of the variances that we can determine. When we get a more detailed plan, hopefully, there'll be nothing else, but that's on the applicant, they will need to review their plan and make sure that they're seeking all the variances that they need, and in, if in fact they don't, then they may run the risk of having to be bounced back and forth, which I'm sure they don't want to do. That's all I have.
Okay, and then, I guess the applicant is aware of going to the village board with the height of the building, the hotel, right?
Yes.
In your report? And then, all right. Stu? Oh, Stu and Dennis, you're going to get together on the total, total of square feet? Because both of your reports, you'll knock that out?
Yeah, eventually, they'll, they'll have to, they'll have to resolve that, that's, I think, not the most significant item at the moment, they have a lot of work to do. And I, I realized again, I think Steve did not get this, this memo, but it had several key items, so he knows what he has to do as far as the, the variances. There are two things that we would like to bring to your attention, or make sure you have it. It's very hard to follow this submission, the maps, the ramps, the new ramps, if at some point, you can clarify for the, that for the planning board, it would be very helpful. The second thing is that I think you may or may not have made an error in the calculation of the parking, based on the zoning. Look at that again, please. And the third thing is, the way the current plan is set up, I think there, there may be planning issues with regard to the relationship with the commuter parking to the hotel, it's, I don't know how it's going to function, you'll determine that, or your client will, but the parking spaces are right up against the hotel, they could be mistaken for hotel parking, you'll have to work that out. Otherwise, there's no reason to go into, in my opinion, there's no reason to go into detailed discussion of the plan at the moment. We were very concerned, because one of our primary responsibilities is to worry about the open space and landscaping on the plan. Steve will have to figure out a way to do that, but it's very, very tight right now. He's asking the zoning board for extra coverage, it's hard to tell where the buffers are going to be, et cetera. So, we'll, we'll leave some of that to later in the process.
Thank you. Rick, Kelly, who's going to take it from here?
I'll take it. I think part of the difficulty now is simply that the applicant themselves need some guidance from the ZBA as to what they will or will not do, or what they will or will not interpret in a certain way. And until that happens, it's difficult to better formulate, formalize what this plan is going to be. And so there are a lot of open issues now, but I think part of that is that they need to get some direction from the ZBA. The ZBA won't be able to act until you complete seeker, but typical of these concurrent applications is that they'll get some indication from the ZBA prior to a vote, and then they'll come back before you and give you a more detailed plan based upon that kind of direction. So, you know, this is just really at the infancy of, of going through the process, and I think a lot of the questions will be answered when they come back with a more detailed plan. The only other thing is that you should type the action as an unlisted action. And that's all I have at this time.
Okay.
They did it.
Dennis, in your notes to Maria, or Natalie, whoever's sending the notes to Maria, GML, I don't see it was sent out yet. Is it too soon?
I don't, I don't, I don't have anything on it.
It wasn't sent out, because I don't have, she didn't sign my name to the forms to be sent out. Can we make sure she does that, please?
Yes.
I'm striking out here, aren't I, tonight?
Well, actually, you know what, I, I would actually usually refer it when I do the notice to declare lead agency, so, and I would sign it as attorney for the planning board, so I will send that out.
And with the intent to be lead agency, you'll, you'll include Harriman?
Harriman, yes, Board of Trustees, yes, everybody that was mentioned here tonight.
Okay.
I would also be sending it to the county DPW, just so, you know, and the planning department. I will make an entire list, and, you know what, I'll pass it by Dennis and Stu, make sure they don't have anybody else.
All right, because, all right, because-
Got to cover our bases.
There are a number of permitting agencies.
Oh, yeah. And also make sure Water, Sewer, and Highway is aware. And also, you'll, Dennis or Rick, who's going to, do we have to follow up? Is the applicant following up with the village about Melody Lane portion? They're going to do it?
We'll do that.
That's up to them. Right now, it's, it's simply property owned by the village.
Yep.
And so, if they are going to include that property in this, they will need, among other things, an owner's authorization from the village, if they can use this property as part of their site plan. So, right now, it's an application that couldn't ever get approved in its current form, and it's not meant to be in a form that can be approved. So, like I said before, a lot has to happen with respect to that road, that will be up to the applicant to approach the village board of trustees.
All right. So I guess you got everything that you needed, and we'll do a referral to the ZBA, and it's up to the applicant to get any and all variances that you may need, and I'm just going to ask this, you're proceeding at your own risk, going to the ZBA and the planning board at this time, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to make it, who's, I can't take any comments from the public, I'm sorry. I'm sor, I'm sorry, I can't-
I think it's invited to march you now.
I cannot take anything right now. You can talk to our attorney afterwards, okay? Thank you. We're going to declare this an unlisted action, do I have a motion to?
Some move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
We're good? All right. We have one more item that we have to go over, Gardens at Harriman, consideration of recommendation to the village board regarding the Transit Village zoning district, zoning modifications, the properties within the village of Woodbury are known on the tax notice in section 243 block 1 and lots 1 through 25. Everyone who's in the audience, you're welcome to stay and listen to all that, while Steve is cleaning up, if you want to talk to our attorney, real quick, go right ahead while you have the time. Board members, we do have to go over this, because it's something that is being requested of us. Thank you for coming out, Chris. Thank you for coming out. I know. Well, this one will be on Kelly. This one's on, this is on Kelly. All right, all right, as long as we're ready, we have to go over the, what I just read?
Are they making a presentation, or we're just discussing something?
Well, Kelly's going to go over all this. Steve, you're not going to be speaking on this.
I'm not.
I'm going to lead off with Kelly, so you can have a, you can have a seat right now, okay?
Yep.
I forgot your first name. You're from the, you're the planning board in Harriman?
Yeah.
My mind is shot, and I'm so, I'm so aggravated right now. Why is our traffic so not here on my two applications that I need them on? I need a bold guess. All right, Kelly, being that it's 9:30, let's see what we can do with this in the next 15, 20 minutes.
Oh, wait, no, what? I can do it quite quickly.
Okay. Board members, I'm going to let Kelly take on this request. Gentlemen, can I please have some little low-level decibels back there? Thank you.
So, the Gardens at Harriman has requested that the planning board consider certain changes to chapter 310 zoning, to see if those would be changes that you would be willing to recommend to the Board of Trustees. What I did is I set forward a memo for you that set out exactly what those changes were, they're primarily all included in 310-31.3, which is your Transit Village District. The only other provision outside of that is for your definitions, and those would be for a definition of a brew pub, a microbrewery slash winery, and for craft production. I also distributed to you, I think Monday, maybe Tuesday, a redlined version, just to show you how it would be incorporated into the actual provision.
And I thank you.
There was like one typo, where a parentheses was missing, but the rest was in there, and as you can see, it pretty much just expands what some of the additional permitted uses would be, from, let's see, 10 to 19, it lists out the accessory uses, things, a lot of things that you would think would normally be in there, but they weren't specifically laid out. Should I do anything else? That's, that's pretty much the summary of it, I can go over each one if you'd like.
Let me just give a, a little bit of a brief overview of this, connection. And that is, when an applicant wants, excuse me, to go ahead and request his zone changes, several ways that they can do it under your code, and this process that we're talking about is one which is allowable, and that is for the planning board to consider certain modifications and make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees that the zone, zoning regulations should be modified in a certain way. So you have something before you, which has been discussed, and it's now before you to say whether or not you want to recommend these to the Board of Trustees for their action. You don't take an action, you're not determining this at all, it's simply a passing on of whether or not you believe this is appropriate as a recommendation for the Board of Trustees to consider. It's not necessarily that, a recommendation that you believe that it ought to be exactly in this fashion, but it's a recommendation that the Board of Trustees should consider these types of modifications to the Transit Village. As you all know, Transit Village was laid out without any particular project in mind, and it was, in my opinion, was masterful, and what they tried to anticipate with that, and I give a lot of credit to Stu and others, along this line. But now that there's a specific project that's trying to come under it, there's other things now that may make more sense with particular types of uses and accessory uses and setbacks and things like that, that from a practical point of view, may be appropriate for the Board of Trustees to consider. So that's really what this is for, is if you think these warrant a recommendation on to the Board of Trustees for their consideration, even if you don't think that everything in here ought to be exactly how it is, then that's really what's before you now.
I'd just like to add one brief comment to what Rick has said, because he summarized very well, but, you know, those of you who were around when the comprehensive plan was adopted and the Transit Village was incorporated, everyone made an effort to, to set the framework for a Transit Village, a sort of a walkability community that could use the railroad and so on, and I think it was fully anticipated that whenever there was finally someone who was interested in developing it, there would have to be refinements. The broad parameters are established, they're in the zone, the framework for the, you know, for achieving the kind of community that the developer would like to achieve and the village would like to achieve are there, and this is really an attempt to refine some of the things that were put in the original Transit Village zone. So, I don't know if that gives you any comfort, but that's really what this reflects.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
And I just want to clear the air on this, Rick, because this has been mulled around. Being that the, this change request is coming from the applicant, this cannot be viewed as spot zoning at all, right?
No, it's, it's not spot zoning at all, because it's, you're not taking any property and putting a different kind of zone on it. This is the same zone, you're not changing the zoning.
Right, no, I understand that.
Well, that's why it couldn't be spot zoning, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
All you're doing is changing some regulations within that current zone, but you're not changing the zoning at all.
Okay.
The board adopted, the board adopted a Transit Village zone originally, and this is just refinements within that zone.
No, but, and, and that's why I just want it out there, because it's been thrown around in different venues.
Venues.
Venues, that this is, is spot zoning, and I just want it on the record that this is not spot zoning.
It's, it's not anywhere near spot zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to, before we, on section 310-2B with definitions, the new three definitions that you have here, you have microbrewery slash winery. In our code book, 310-39.1, we have criteria for a farm winery, and that's for growing and manufacturing for a winery. Now, with New York State, a winery can sell beer, craft beer, and I'm presuming it'd be vice versa. What I am concerned about in the language of it is that you have here, an establishment primarily engaged in the production and distribution of beer, ale, or other malt beverages or wine, which shall include a tasting room, may sample the facility's products, and consume other non-alcoholic beverages. A microbrewery is not a winery, it's not a farm winery, so I don't understand why you have microbrewery slash winery. The language would need to be changed in such that the microbrewery is- defined as selling wine that is from a local farm winery, or is it anything with the state? Because I know, I'm not sure if it reverses back and forth, because I know a winery can sell craft beer, but I'm not sure if a brewery can sell wine. I, I don't know what the code is with the states. I know they've changed it.
Okay, what?
So I have a.
First.
Go ahead.
Okay, first, that's what this is before you now, for you to adopt this, or make another recommendation? When the board of trustees gets it, they could take your recommendation, or they could go and go back to this original language? That's the board of trustees leeway in this.
Yeah.
With, I don't think, on the second point, I don't think that you need to concern yourself at all with respect to the state, okay?
Alright.
The state and the licensing is something that can change from time to time, and what this board, and then ultimately the board of trustees that will actually enact something of some sort, they will say that you can do this from a zoning perspective. Now, if that doesn't, if the applicant can't get licensed for that, well, then it's not going to happen. But it, so, you're just looking at it from a zoning perspective solely, and whether or not they can get a license is going to be a separate issue for them, and whether or not they can get an exemption from a license, whether they could get the state to pass different regulations to allow what's being allowed here is really of no moment. So it's just.
I'm just concerned about putting microbrewery slash winery. I personally don't think winery should be included in that, but that's just my opinion. I don't know what the rest of the board members feel.
Well, are we empowered here to, are this, are we looking at this just from a conceptual point of view, or we have to get specific about what we like, what we don't like?
What, what it is, is that you are recommending to the board of trustees that they consider whatever you're going to send to them. And they can say, "That sounds great," or they can say, "Thanks for the recommendation, but we're going to do something different now."
Right, they can.
They're going to rewrite it anyway, okay.
Well, this is.
They have the ability to, yes.
They have the right.
But they're going to be given this particular revised law with our input into it. Would, do we, do we agree with what is written in red from the attorneys, and are we agreeing to send this to the village?
Some of, some of, at least on the, the definitions, like Maria said, with the microbrewery slash winery, some of it crosses over definitions that we already have, like even with craft production, there's a.
Understood. But what, what happens is, is that as with, these are going to be general definitions, right? And so, you can try to go ahead and look at all the other definitions in the zoning code under 310, and try to reconcile all of them and modify this accordingly. Or you can leave that to the board of trustees to do. And, but you can modify this however you want. If you want to take out winery, take out winery. And, because if you think that that's too confusing with a, a present one, that's what your recommendation to the board of trustees will be, and then the board of trustees will either say, "You're right," or they may put winery back in. So, all you do is try to figure out what you think is best as a recommendation for, to allow something like this to occur, and then it'll be up to the board of trustees to determine how they respond to it.
The only reason why I took that one is because this definitions is different than what the actual law is, and I wanted to go over those definitions. I don't know how anyone else feels about leaving the word "winery" in or taking it out, because I don't like it. I think it should not be there, because we define what a, what a winery is. And the way this is written is that, "May sample the facility's products." They not, a brewery, they may have someone else's beer in there, so it's not necessarily their products. They may have an ale, a pale ale that comes from Newburgh, or a Bach that comes from Warwick, and it's not theirs. You see what I'm saying? So, that language that says "the facility's products," that's what I have a concern with. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, how to present it to the board of trustees.
I, I thought they didn't belong together when I read it. I thought something was not right there.
Yeah. I mean, because this brewery, if it comes in, may not just have their products. They may have someone else's products, so, and it limits them, and it says "facility products" as well. So I think there's a, something that needs to be clarified. I don't know. Chris, what do you?
I, I think, I, I think they should have the ability to have both.
Well, then the language needs to be changed. It's not saying "may sample the facility's products." You could say "facility and other manufacturer's products." Then you can change it that way. It's whatever, but it, but to me, we went through what, what a winery, winery was many, many years ago on the planning board, and.
Well, that's what I'm saying. There's, there's stuff that's defined in here, even for craft production. There's custom workshop in here that takes about half of the craft production.
In the, in the definition?
Yeah. So, that's where I'm, I'm confused.
Well, I can tell you on the craft production that some of that, I know that the custom workshop was looked at, but that that seemed more like, like somebody whittling or tinkering at toys, and this was meant to do, you know, there's a lot of people who make jewelry and little ceramic crafts, so this was supposed to encompass those more.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it, but it's, it's, it overlaps. So I don't know, I mean, I know, when I was on the ZVA, we got, we got caught a few times with some loopholes in definitions, and, and it made it hard on some of our decisions. So I don't want to, I mean, I understand what they want with these definitions and everything, but I just, I, I think we need to consider them more, so that we're not, we're not adding more loopholes to what's already there.
Well, what I can put in is that for, at least for craft production, is that the board of trustees takes a look at this and how it may overlap with other definitions.
With custom workshop.
And then for the one above it, that the board's concerned with including winery, and also include, and also concerned with limiting the sampling or drinking to solely that facility's products, when you may get a Miller Lite instead of that brewery's beer.
I'd, I'd be, I'm willing for that, yes. And our comments doesn't have to be unanimous? It's just individual comments? Or does it have to be unanimous? I just want to make clear before we go.
Certainly it doesn't have to be unanimous.
Okay.
Okay? But this is a recommendation of the planning board, so it should carry a majority of the planning board. So if we want to go over this one by one, if that's how you want to do it, and I think that's a good way to do it, actually, because you can resolve something, put it behind you, and get to the next point. But Kelly, Kelly suggested some generalized language to accompany this, and that would be your recommendation.
Your.
So you don't have to wrestle over specific wording. You can say, "Here's some wording. We have some problems with this, or you should consider some other things." That's your recommendation.
Okay. So Sandy and Robert, with the winery, you want the language changed and looked at? Because I know Chris said no, correct?
Yeah, I would just, like it, as Kelly said, compare, for them to compare.
And then the craft production, we're asking the village board of trustees to look at that definition with what's already in the codebook under custom workshop.
Right, and.
You're okay with that?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kelly, on the second line of that, where it says "other product" under craft production? Is that too vague?
Does the board think it's too vague? If the board thinks it's too vague, I can put in.
But I guess it would depend on who was.
Commercial use involved, limited.
Well, what, when you, when it says "or other product," from a, from an interpretation point of view, that "other product" is something that, is a product that's related to the specific listing, like in the same category or type as the prior listing. It's just not an exhaustive listing, but you couldn't put fire engines in there, for instance. That wouldn't be an "other product."
That's why I, that's why I asked. Is it too vague, or, okay, but you've given me the.
Okay.
Example, okay.
Alright. Now, if all the board members have the redlined paper, you have the redlined one that was in. No, that was, there was another one that was in the mailbox.
No, I didn't get that.
It was in the mail. Did you get your mail tonight?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. You want to run and get it?
No, it's alright, I can, I can listen.
Did you get yours? The redlined one?
Yes, I have it.
And I want to thank Kelly for putting that together for, because it put everything in order for me. Thank you.
So what are we up to?
Alright. The redlined one, we're on page one, number, uh, B, general 3. There's added language. I don't have a problem with that.
Looks good.
Sandy, the first pa, the first one, do you have a problem with that?
I looked that.
Alright, um.
What was that last thing you said, Maria?
On 310 dash 31.3, B, general, number 3, B, where Kelly has the first red line?
Yes.
All board members are okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
With, as we go down that page, where general and medical offices slash, um, excuse me, comma, professional offices, dental offices, we're okay with that, board members?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, the next one is indoor commercial, recreation, and health clubs, and health spas. We're okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Um, number 6, it says restaurant, and it says fast food restaurants, bars, and brew pubs, any of which may have outdoor seating subject to site plan review. I have a problem with fast food restaurants having a seating outside. It just seems to, it's, to me, fast food sitting outside, why would you want to put that when you want to make this a general place for shops, for brewery, and crafts? I, I, fast food just doesn't jive with me in there. I don't know why, but that just stuck out in my mind.
Well, I think they should have outdoor.
Fast food, I think fast food could, could be ice cream, a place like an ice cream store. And many times in the summer, you'll see a little place outside, people will be sitting down, having ice cream, or whatever, the children. So it's not, it's not all Burger Kings and McDonald's. There are other types of fast foods.
An example would be too, like if you went, like the Shake Shack, or like a pizza shop that usually has a table or two outside. I think that's what they were going for. Or a deli, if you order a sandwich.
What is, what is our current code for outdoor seating in restaurants in, in the village?
What's the definition for restaurant?
There's, there's outdoor seating. See, I just want to make sure we're clear, because I know we, there is only one place that I know of legally can have outdoor seating, and it's at the south end of Woodbury on 32. Anyone else that puts tables out on their sidewalks, they can't do it in Woodbury.
We used to have it in Woodbury Common. There, was it Posa Posa, or someplace that?
They don't do that anymore.
They don't do it anymore, I know, but they did.
Shake Shack does have outside seating, and, but we approved that, because it was the complex. And also, one of the sushi places has it outside. But within Woodbury sidewalks, and now you're putting this on sidewalks. I want to be very clear, and that maybe something with Gary might want to have some input about outdoor seating.
Gary's going to have, Gary has had, and Gary will have continued input with respect to this with the board of trustees.
Alright.
Right, the, the term, the, first, the term "fast food restaurants" is going to be defined as it's defined in the code now, so it's not like it's redefining it here. That has a definition. Now, you're adding now that it has outdoor seating subject to site plan review. Again, you're talking about, this is not something now, we're talking about general definitions that apply throughout the village. Those are the only, the first three that you talked about. All the rest of these changes are with respect to just the Transit Village, what can happen. And part of this, and Stu can correct me if I'm wrong, but part of this is to have potentially a different feel for the Transit Village than there is in the rest of the village. So it's not always going to match up one versus the other. So for instance, it may, and this is what your recommendation and the board of trustees has to determine, whether or not having outdoor seating in the Transit Village area may be a good thing whereby it may not be generally throughout the village.
But Rick, something like that, isn't that going to, I mean, I thought the Transit Village was intended to almost be its own little village within a village.
Yes.
Isn't something like that going to draw, and the, just like the, the microbrewery, whatever, isn't that going to draw from outside in? So then what does that do to the parking and everything? That's where I'm really confused over all of this.
Well, I mean, those issues will have to be discussed in a site plan application.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and seeker. Alright, but what we're talking about now is just, is it allowable? Not, what are the impacts to a particular project that it's going to be in there? Those will have to be studied by a planning board.
I know, I, I just, sometimes I feel like the cart is before the horse.
I, I know. We're just expanding the language that, when it was originally put in, we, we didn't think forward.
I understand.
That whole discussion of, of the site plan, you, you're going to have to look at that. And remember before I mentioned about the original guidelines that are in there, talking about creating a village, creating an atmosphere, a pedestrian-oriented community? That, that does come up in a couple of these, where they, where the, the proposal is to cut back some of the, you know, the, the first level, non-residential development, for instance. It, and so that, and, and I was going to, I was going to make some comments about that, but then I'm thinking that you have those guidelines in the Transit Village. You'll make some of those decisions about the pedestrian orientation when you're doing site plan reviews. And I'm not sure that this changes that, that objective.
Alright, alright, well.
I do have one or two comments that I'd like to make at some point, when you get to, if you're going through one by one.
Well, if I'm reach, if I've met one of them that you, well, we've got, so I'm up to number 6 now. Um, that's just my opinion about the fast food. If the rest of the board, I can always speak at a public hearing about that.
What does the majority of the board feel on that?
The fast food. What do you think about the fast?
Well, I think it's, as long as it's subject to site plan review, I feel comfortable with that.
Okay. Sandy?
Yeah, if it's, if it's subject to site plan.
I'm good.
But do we have to, subject to site pla, alright.
It's on there.
It's all subject.
I see.
It's all subject.
One, it specifically talks here about it being subject to site plan, but actually, all of this is subject to site plan.
Yeah, okay. Um, number 10, we're good with the train, train station, I mean, you've, you're putting police station in there. Uh, that's a town board thing. I don't want to go there about putting a police station in there on number 10. I don't want to overstep my bounds with the town. That's just my personal feeling, because the police, the police may not want, the town board may not want a police station down there.
This is.
Well, these are permitted uses, but it, it's, it wouldn't have a private police station, though. These, these are uses that are basically.
It's also, there, there should be an existing MTA police station there. I think this is.
Well. And the train, isn't there?
Eric?
The Harriman station, doesn't it have a substation?
They, the train station has a substation for their, for their police.
Yeah.
That's what it is trying to incorporate.
Right, okay.
Alright.
But again, if you feel uncomfortable with it, you can take it out or note a concern, and that will be part of your recommendation. It's not like you have to worry that you're actually making these determinations now.
So what does the majority of the board think on that one?
I'm good with it.
Sandy?
Well, maybe just to ask for, ask direct it, so that the village board just has a conversation on it. That portion, police station and substation.
Maybe I can ask a procedural question. The out, the red outline here in this, this is tailoring something from what the applicant has requested to, to modify, to, to allow all the uses in there, what they propose. If the planning, if, well, it's a little different than that, but if the planning board wants to say that this is what's proposed in here, but we have some concerns we'd like to be discussed, could they do it on a separate memo with this that goes with this, or do they have to tailor this to have the exact language that they want to have adopted in the code?
That's what I'm saying, is that they don't, and what Kelly said before, they don't have to have the exact language. They can simply say, "Well, here's some language, but if you're going to consider this language, you ought to also consider something else." And that can take a number of different forms. I don't think Kelly and I have decided which form to put it in. It could be a separate memo, it could be comments, you know, sort of redlined comments on the side to the board that says, "Also think about this, be concerned about this," et cetera.
Okay. And that leads to a second question. I just want to introduce this. I have some thoughts on this. I, I took a look through this. I gave some comments to Kelly on this, a few things that I thought, some small items, it wasn't a major. But in terms of the technical requirements, parking and out, parking requirements per square foot, or per person, or per seat, that's an area where I'd like to comment. And I don't want to take a lot of the board's time now, or I could, to describe what I think is in there. Or I could write a separate memo to the board, to the board of trustees when this goes over, and as, as the village engineer, and comment on the, on the proposed change. And it would be on those particular technical items. The applicant is going to ask for a waiver for parking, because they think that things overlap. But what I'd like to get in there is I don't want to have a standard here, which is at odds with everything else we've ever done. And I find that in one or two things on, on the parking, so I would, and I don't want to take your time up on all those technical. to take your time up on all those technical things, but I think I'll write a separate memo, just so you're not surprised when you get a memo, uh, that talks about some things here, so that's the way I'll proceed on it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Now, if you work on this, and Stu works on this, Kelly, whose budget is this coming out of?
Oh, is this part actually?
If Stu and Dennis do a memo, is it coming out of my budget, or the applicant?
No, no.
There's escrow money?
It's an escrow.
Coming out of the applicant, but there's an, there's an escrow, just so that it's clear, there's an escrow that the applicant has for planning board work here.
Okay.
The applicant has also submitted a separate escrow to the Board of Trustees.
Okay.
All of these issues dealing with the local law and potential changes to it.
Okay, so that comes out of that?
Comes out of the Board of Trustees escrow, and we've been directed to bill it to that escrow, rather than the general escrow for the planning board.
Just so that all the consultants?
And it's certainly not out of the planning board's own line item.
Okay.
Has nothing to do with that.
Just want to make sure, because I'm very touchy about my line item. Um, if you're gonna leave police station or substation in there, why isn't it not expanded to a fire station or a substation? If you're gonna do one emergency, I'm just asking.
I can include a statement in your recommendation, because it appeared to be, like, two-two, that says, determine the scope of the type of police station or substation, and other emergency services?
I just want, if, if this village goes the way we all think and hope it's going to go, and if they need to have a poli, a fire substation, and it's not in the code, can they still do it? And if it's not written, from I was told many years ago, it can't be done.
We would check that out when it happens, but I'll include in your recommendation for, and other emergency services.
You know what I'm talking about, Robert?
Right, if, if in fact it's going to be a true municipal station, like a typical police station, or a typical fire station, it would not have to be in the zoning code for it to occur.
Okay.
Because they have the ability just to place it there. They don't have to get planning board approval to place a police, the village wouldn't have to come to the planning board to put a police station anywhere in the village, they can just put it there.
But the town could, has to.
That's a very good point, Maria.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
We'll, we'll make it broader to include other emergency services.
I'm sorry, Dennis. All right, let's move on then. Um, anyone have a problem with eleven, childcare, twelve, urgent care?
No.
There, there's no vending machines anymore for water, sorry. Um. I had written on number thirteen, subject to planning board review, but that's, that's, we don't have to put that for everyone on the number thirteen with drive-through facilities. Um, number fourteen, then again, you have the microbrewery slash winery, and a winery needs state highway access. I'm just putting it out there, so I know there's a couple of board members here, they'll probably ask me about that later on. Um, craft production, I guess we're gonna look at that slash custom workshop, you're gonna present that to the board?
For fourteen and fifteen, just to go back to fourteen for a minute, you're talking about a farm winery, as a farm winery is defined in your code, but I will mark down the same comments as above next to fourteen, and for, um, the other comment.
And number fifteen with the craft production?
Yes.
Okay. Library, museum, cultural communities, open space, passive recreation, um, stop me, anyone stop me when I was, I'm, I'm up to eight.
No, keep going, keep going.
Number eighteen.
There's four more pages here.
I would like to, I would like to comment on eighteen, if I may.
Good, I have, I have, I have a question too on that, but go ahead, Stu.
Okay, well, my, my, it's a general comment, because I always advise boards this. Um, first of all, I don't know what intrinsically necessary, but the more important part of that is, it places a lot of burden on the code enforcement officer, and usually I would recommend for something like this, that a board make those decisions. It, it's asking a lot of him.
I put with planning board input, but I don't know.
You know, that's an idea too, but, I mean, if he, I don't know if he even wants that authority, but maybe he does. But it, it's, it's really a matter of interpretation, and it's a hard thing to deal with. We're dealing with it in Fishkill now, too, the issue of, of allowing uses that are not specifically permitted, and they're giving it to the planning board, actually.
Or we can take the code enforcement officer out and the planning board, and give it to the village trustees, and let them figure it out. I, I'm being, sorry, Tim. I don't know which way is best to go with that. You, you had the same feelings, Sandy?
Yeah.
Because I had it highlighted.
Yeah, because I.
The trustees will figure it out. The trustees will figure it out.
I don't, I don't know what's best. Do you have the engineer and the code enforcement referral back to the Pete, planning board, or you have the trustees?
You could simply state, you could simply state, if you wish, that you think that that item should be considered. You could simply state that you think that item should be considered by the Board of Trustees for the most appropriate way to handle that in the future, whether it be the building inspector, whether it be a combination of a couple of people, or whether it be a board, uh, and let them wrestle with, unless, unless you have a firm opinion, but if you don't, just, you think it's worthy of thought.
Do you, do you like what Dennis just said, Robert?
Yes.
Actually, a board would be, be good, because you're gonna be dealing with a review of a proposal in this, in this transit village.
So Kelly, basically, Chris, you're okay with?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with a board.
So what Dennis just said, did you catch what he said?
Should, consider by the Board of Trustees, the most appropriate way to handle this one in the future, and I guess either just the code enforcement officer, or with another consultant.
Or by a board.
Or by the board, yes. All right, perfect. Um, nineteen.
Nineteen.
Letter A, I have home occupations with question marks, in the village, a home occupation, you have your occupation downstairs, and you live above. You're supposed to live in the building that you have a home occupation. How is this different from our current code, home occupations?
It would be defined as it still is in your code, I don't know what you're.
But if you have.
I don't think it's a definition change. It, the, home occupation in, is defined in the village. They're just proposing that it be a use that's permitted in this, I mean, I think it's redundant, to be honest, but it, it's.
So if you have a two-bedroom condo?
You could have a home occupation.
But you don't have to have it downstairs, like we have.
No, but you have to live there.
You have to live there.
As it's defined, now.
So you live in one bedroom, and the other bedroom is your office?
That's up to you, yeah, and that's up to the person.
But now, what kind of a home occupation?
Well, I think it's, I, I.
Massage therapist?
I think the code defines.
What do you do?
I think your code actually does give examples, saying such as, you know, a.
Okay.
Planner, landscape architect, I think.
Yeah.
Is that the one that you had a question on, Sandy?
Esthetician, I think is one.
Nineteen D, you read that whole, if you read nineteen, accessory uses, buildings and structures which may be accessory to a specific principal use, or to a transit village generally, such as buildings and structures incidental to a principal use. Isn't that just like running around in a circle?
Well, no, it, it, it could have a definition a little bit different, but what, what, I, what you're getting at, and I agree with you, for instance, if you go down to N, they say, other accessory uses in buildings, which meets the definition of accessory use that generally applies. I think that that ought to come out, and I think that in the very beginning of nineteen, it should say, in addition to accessory uses in three, ten, dash, two. And then, these are things in addition to that. So it kind of clarifies that we're talking about something different from accessory uses that are generally described in three, ten, dash, two.
That's just the definition of accessory use.
I know.
But is still confusing.
We can also add a, a comment here, if the board is, thinks that this is not clear enough, to say that your recommendation is that the Board of Trustees ought to reconcile this with the general accessory use definition, and provide clarity.
So, if you want to go through each one, we can continue to do that, or I can include the language that Rick just mentioned, um, and also remove eight, it kind of seemed like everybody nodded, but I just, like, nod.
Which one?
N, the other, it's the very last one.
Yeah.
Yeah, delete that one and incorporate it into the number nineteen.
Okay.
Um, I guess we're leaving home occupations alone, and E with the fast food again, restaurants?
With the language that Kelly just said, they would look at it as a.
Yeah, they, they would end up looking at each one of these. But if there's a specific one that jumps out at you, again, let me know, and I'll mark it down.
What is a G, what is car sharing and short-term automobile rental? What is that supposed to represent?
Well, Uber and.
Lifts and anything else?
Car rent.
Okay. Like if a lot of people are working in the city, and they're living there, and they're taking the train in, but then they come here and they want to go grocery shopping somewhere, and they need to rent a quick car, it's like smart card.
Yeah, zip card. Okay. An H, outdoor pop-up restaurants?
What's that?
What, I don't want to, I don't, are we talking food trucks here? Come on. I, I don't think so.
Actually.
I don't think so.
I did talk to someone young who knows about these things. And apparently, this is in vogue, that a, a, um, a store like a friend, not a Friendly's, but an Applebee's, might have a pop-up, they would put in an area right outside where they might have sidewalk seating, they put a tent up, they have a little bar, it's margarita night, and that's a pop-up restaurant, is what I understand. Um, somebody's nodding, that maybe this is true. Uh, I, I can't say as I've ever experienced this, but I understand that this is, uh, some current trend here.
So now you can have outdoor seating at a fast food restaurant with it being a pop-up restaurant?
And heating and cooking, a fast, a, a fast food restaurant's gonna, I, I.
I think it's for all barbecue.
I think it'd be, getting so crazy here, associated with a permanent restaurant or fast food restaurant. Now you're taking up sidewalk space. We don't know what the sidewalk space is going to be, and outdoor seating.
Subject to site plan.
I would think on your site plan.
I know.
I'm sorry, everything will be subject to site plan, so that.
Understood.
This is, just says that they could have one, if in fact, it makes sense, given the particulars that circumstance, under the site plan that you'll be considering. So it may be that you say, this doesn't make any sense because of all this other sidewalk use that's being done, but maybe this is the only site plan, that is, the only use that is asking for outdoor seating at a time.
And the, the operational aspects of this would be covered under your special permit.
Right.
So if, if it's not something you can show on a site plan, per se, exact spot, you could do it by, uh, your special permit, and Gary would, would be the one who would regulate it or enforce it, if it doesn't meet with any criteria you might set.
But I do think that it probably deserves, uh, a definition for pop-up restaurant.
Not the one I just.
You know, an example, though, might be, uh, at Woodbury Common, where there's a lot of areas where you have to get emergency vehicles through, you don't want to block pedestrian movement. So that, you, you do allow them to have chiosks, or, or whatever, they, mobile, whatever they call the mobile units. So it's a similar concept, where you have control over its location or function.
And if you're concerned, um, with the food trucks, we can also ask them to clarify whether or not this includes food trucks, which should be resolved once they provide a definition, but do I see anybody nodding, or you don't want?
And then if you, if you go into I, outdoor seating with craft product, as a deli, a bakery, or, now we're, now you're having all these potential stores having.
Go outside.
Let's just go, go eat outside. I mean, I, it's nice, but in this area, it would have to only be limited certain times of the year because of the weather.
But Maria, let.
But that's not, I'm, I'm giving it to myself.
I think, I think, I think the problem is, is that you, you are considering that they're gonna utilize all of these things, right? And it may, they may utilize one of these things. And then, some of those problems go away. So it, it all comes down to site plan.
They could use, utilize all of them, or half of them, or else they wouldn't have asked for them.
To, no, no, that's not true. That, anybody would like to have as much, any developer wants as much flexibility as possible, so that, where they can't determine right now exactly what they will need, so they want to have the flexibility to, to use things. That doesn't mean that they have an entitlement to it, um, an absolute entitlement to it, just like anything, um, that's subject to site plan, you have the ability to say that it does or doesn't work in this particular instance, given all the other surrounding aspects. So if they, the only thing they had was pop-up restaurants, that's the only time that they had something on the sidewalk, and it was limited to, they were asking you to limit it to a particular area, that may make a lot of sense. If in fact, that's with seventeen other uses that are going to have, they're asking for outdoor seating, then that may make no sense, and you may not permit it. It, it's, I think it's similar to, let's say you have, you know, you're allowing certain retail uses. It doesn't mean that all of those retail uses will be used at one location, even though technically, they could put an application in for all of those. It's gonna be subject to your site plan review, as to what's appropriate, what circulation is appropriate, pedestrian and traffic, and, and bicycle, um, how that relates in a juxtaposition with some other use that's, that's on the site, that's being considered. But if, if you don't want pop-up restaurants, we can eliminate pop-up restaurants.
But, but then if you go to letter I, is a, is a deli considered a restaurant? If they have a sit-down inside? Is a bakery that has a sit, uh, sit-down on the inside, is that considered a restaurant? I, I'm being devil's advocate here, I mean, I, you know, at this point, I would say, leave H and I in there, let the village board decide on that, um.
But, but remember, these are all, these are all accessory uses.
Mm-hmm.
To buildings and structures.
I know.
So the next one, J, is even better.
Look at K.
Educational facilities.
Yeah, but you have to, the thing that you should, I think you need to keep in mind is, it's, it's the environment that this, that the zoning exists, is the project itself.
I know.
It's gonna have very unique characteristics, and therefore, very unique needs, that we're, that we're not used to, living here and being here. This unit, this community will have it. Well, people that want to move there will come to expect a lot of these types of things and options. So that's just what you have to be a little aware, you know, just more aware of.
But if, going on what you're saying, if there's twenty townhouses, are you gonna, by, by J, we're saying that they could have twenty swimming pools.
No, they, they can't, if you don't, if you think twenty is too much, right?
Once they come to site plan, then we.
I, I understand that, but it's, it's.
It doesn't give them, what I'm saying is, it doesn't give them that right to have twenty.
It gives you the right to approve whatever you think is appropriate on the plan.
Right. And considering all the other uses that's there.
Oh, you see what?
Yeah, they have a right to ask for.
All right, so.
They don't have to go to the ZDA to do.
So where, if we go back to page one, where C says permitted uses within this district shall be as follows, where we have what's there already, and what they're requesting, maybe we should add the, a line there, says pending approval from the plan, subject to the planning board, site plan approval, or whatever, maybe if we put a clarification with the first sentence at the top, before they list items one through, whatever the number ends in, nineteen, maybe we should put a caveat sentence in the front there, letter C, and then it clears us. You see what I'm saying, Sandy?
It says B three. B three says, upon application to the planning board for approval of a site plan development within this zone, the applicant shall initially submit a conceptual plan, at a minimum, showing these things, and upon agreement by the planning board, a conceptual plan meets the basic criteria, you can go forward. And the permitted uses within this district that are subject to that whole planning board, both the conceptual and then the specific.
Right, now, we've seen a conceptual plan, we haven't seen anything since.
Right.
So all these, so a conceptual plan can be totally different now, once this goes through, and we've never even, we'll have to look at it at the site plan time.
The conceptual plan didn't really include a lot of detail, uh, specific uses.
Not specific uses, you're right, because they, they were limited from one through nine, or whatever the number is.
But Maria, this would actually, it would also follow your regular site plan process, so if there is a change, where if, if it wasn't in this district, and it was somewhere else, and there's a change of use, and that has to come before you, it would have to do the same if it was in this district. So it's always gonna end up coming back before you.
Under four, B four, it says, after the conceptual plan, the applicant shall then submit a full site plan, including a phasing plan and other plans, which may be required consistent with your site plan provisions in the village code and also seeker, et cetera. So that's what it is. They'll come up with a very specific site plan. And whatever you approve in the site plan, either as a principal use or as an accessory use, that's what they'll be able to do and to the extent you allow that to happen. And to the extent you don't, they can't do it.
Board members from letters G through M, are we leaving them as is? I'm just, I'm moving this forward at this point.
I just feel like, why don't we just say, here, you can do everything, subject to coming before us. That's what I feel like it's saying. There's very little in here that I could think of, I need it back.
Well, just remember, these are just accessory.
I know, I know, but it's just-
I'm good with that, Maria.
Alright, I, I am, so is Robert, and I, I, I share your pain, Sandy. So I'm, so where's, the three of us-
Sandy, I think, I think one of the ways-
I'm sorry.
-to think of this. No, I, I, it's a very good question, but I think one of the ways to think of it is that, let's assume that everything around here was a barren desert and you were going to plan a village for here. And so what are we going to allow in our village? And it's going to be lots of things that you may want to allow somewhere in your village that is, for this part, is somewhat related to the type of what is envisioned, I think. Some sort of vibrant transit-oriented, um, development that has a lot of different uses that will help make this a very vibrant situation. Different from if you wanted to plan a different type of, um, village or city. But if you feel uncomfortable with all of these accessory uses, or a majority of the board feels uncomfortable with it, we can certainly say that, um, the board may want to consider restricting the number of accessory uses from those listed below.
It's not that I'm uncomfortable with it per se, it's just, again, given this vague plan, conceptual plan, I just don't, I, I guess I just don't-
That's not what you're going to be approving, though.
I know, I know, but I'm, with all of this out there, I, I just, I feel that it's a lot.
It's no, it's no different than a lot of the zoning districts within our village right now, or our town right now. I mean, a lot of them have accessory uses, uses-
But look at, look at what you're getting-
In many of the zoning districts.
I've never seen a decorative wall, berms.
Well, you know, we've never seen a transient village either.
Well, but I'm saying that this is just-
You, you'd want, as opposed to a, a plain wall, you want a decorative wall. And berms are frequently used so that you don't have to build, you can make natural, uh, land forms that provide screening and buffering. And you've seen, uh, I've seen sidewalks, they meander around sides of development and they provide landscaping and mounds and things like that. It, it has a visual, um, ability to improve things.
Plan.
I'm sorry?
So you enter, you put that in your landscaping plan, why do you need to-
Well, they're saying it's permitted, that's all. I think that's what they're saying in here. And look, if you look at, if you look at this and you say that there's a site that's going to have every single one of these things, and they have it on every single corner, corner, then you're thinking of a carnival as opposed to a development, right? That, but you have, you can exercise control to avoid that in, through the site plan and special permit process. I think that on its face, if you look at an individual item here and you say that individual item's okay within certain bounds, then I think you move on to the next one. But if you find a use there that you think is inconsistent with the zone and shouldn't be there, then we should take that one out. But if you don't find that, then I think you still would be able to maintain your control through the site plan and special permit process to make sure that any of these uses that are proposed are used in a proper form. But if you find something in there that you don't like, we should talk about that and take it out. But what I, what, frankly, from my standpoint, when I take a look at this, I see each individual use. If I looked at it on its face, that it doesn't look bad by itself. That you could incorporate it into a plan and make it work. But if you don't see that and you think there's something wrong, then we should identify that one, take it out.
I think, again, getting back to that these are accessory uses. You have in your general code, all of the uses that you have permitted, it's also permitted any kind of what's considered to be accessory uses, they're just not all identified. Right? So it could be lots of things in there. What, what is being proposed here is that we don't want to have something later on determined, well, that's not accessory. So they're saying they believe that this is, these things are accessory. If you don't think that that's accessory to, you know, uses for transit village, then you should say, no, we don't want those. But it's really no different than a very broad definition that you have for every use, saying that it also includes every accessory use to those uses.
Where are we, Maria? I think we just voted on the last one.
With that said, I'm not happy with M. I, I know we, again, we ran into that with the planning, or with the zoning board and merchandise wasn't defined and it just got very-
Well, see the code, it only, it doesn't, it, the code doesn't include- We could take, yeah, we could take M out.
Does the board want M out?
No, only one person so far wants it out.
Yeah, I just said I want it out.
I want it in.
You want it in?
Out or in?
Out.
Out.
So three wanted out.
Um, I'm just concerned, Rick Kelly, any of these changes, I understand it's for the T, for the, the transit-oriented district, I understand that. Some of these changes, the pop-ups, the sitting outside, what's to stop ABC Restaurant now wanting to come out before the board and putting an outdoor kiosk out on the sidewalk in, across the street?
Because it's not permitted.
It's not permitted in that current zone.
In that zone.
In that zone. But what's to prevent them from not pushing the village board to change the zoning for them or in that particular area? What kind of issue are we setting?
You're not setting a precedent, but everybody always has the ability to go to the board and ask for any zone change.
Because this is put, you know, if you look at this, I'm just want to make sure, because there's other places in town who were denied. They couldn't do outside seating or they couldn't do certain things. And the, when Woodbury Common got their food trucks, that was a big issue. Okay? When this comes, when this site plan comes before us and this app, application has three or ten or twenty of these items on their site plan-
Right.
The public will have their chance to speak then on this particular item, I get that. But I just don't want us, put us, the planning board, with our backs up against the wall and saying that, hey, we did it for down there, I want it to do it up here.
First of all, it's not an issue for the planning board. It's an issue for the board of trustees. The board of trustees determines what uses are permissible in each of the zoning districts. So they are making the determination to say, for instance, we want pop-up restaurants in the transit village, but we don't want it anyplace else. Or we want it in one of the other zones, but not in the rest of the zones. And they have the ability to pick and choose, as long as they're not completely arbitrary and capricious and, and being discriminatory. They have the ability to choose to say, this is what I want in this district and this is what I want in a different district. But it's, in any event, it's for the board of trustees. Once they make that determination, you're bound by that determination that it's permissible here. And if somebody says, well, no, I want it in this different zone, you say, as you do all the time, you can't do that in that zone. Go get a use variance from the ZBA if you want to have it in there. Or ask the village to change, um, the zoning. Those are their only two options.
Alright, for, to move this along, letters G through L, we're leaving alone. Leaving it up to the village board of trustees to deal with that?
Yes.
And let them worry about that. Let's drop down to letter D. One H. Bike parking shall be provided in close proximity to a train station unless prohibited by Metro North Computer Railroad. An applicant shall be deemed to have complied with this requirement. What's a reasonable time?
I had a comment as well on that, Maria. I think that it should be a reasonable time under the circumstances as determined by the planning board. You are allowed to define something as, you know, being reasonable or not, as long as you define who's going to be making that decision. Alright? So it's fine if you will determine what is a reasonable time under all the circumstances. And there's really, I think, no reason to get very specific that it has to be within two days or it has to be five days. It really depends upon the circumstances and you're allowed to make those types of discretionary decisions.
So is the board okay with adding that language under the circumstances determined by the planning board?
Yes.
For the reasonable time, yes.
What a reasonable time, alright. Residential uses, letter number two, B. Condo renting units may be located on upper floors of mixed use. Shall only, alright. Alright, the fire department, maximum permitted height of structure is sixty feet. I don't have a problem with that. And with leading the line of the fire department should be consulted to determine maximum building height. I guess that, the onus is on the village board of trustees to deal with the fire department, not us, right?
Yeah, I, I think that it's probably appropriate to add when you say sixty feet, so that it's clear whether that's inclusive or exclusive of mechanicals. So for instance, it's sixty feet inclusive of mechanicals, so that you don't have a situation where, alright, it's sixty feet and then mechanicals go on above that.
Well, sixty feet is what, a five-story building? It's usually ten feet per floor, right?
Bless you.
Bless you.
I think we did this calculation, wasn't it like ten feet and then there's-
Usually the ground floor is a little bit more, the others are ten. At least that's what I think.
But anyway, I mean, I think that it, you should have some kind of limitation, there's some kind of description as to whether it includes or excludes mechanicals.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure, if you have a ground floor with the business, you have five more stories for apartments or four?
Probably four in that instance. But if you had a ground floor of residential, you might get six stories.
Fifty-two.
If you don't count the mechanicals, then you go to the parapet wall.
What's the maximum height right now? It's thirty-five feet. So we're saying to go to sixty feet?
Six stories with a sixty-wall residential?
This is something the village wants. The reason, the reason why they're-
If you have an elevator tower.
Yeah, I think the sixty feet is meant to have five stories and include mechanicals.
I would say to include mechanical. Now, five stories, you count in the ground floor as one floor and four more above it. Or you're doing six.
No, they said five stories. The first one counts. Next one is two.
I, I want to be clear, because I've heard- I've heard five stories plus the-
Well, you're limiting the-
I just want to make sure that we're understanding clear of what we're doing here.
Well, i- if you're limiting it to height, they can only do that height. Whether they, under the building code, they can't make stories less than a certain amount. Right? They can't have four-foot-high stories.
Well, there's now, there's other places within town that are thirty-five feet and the mechanicals are above it. We've had them put facades, shields, that we don't see them. So if we're going to be consistent-
I think that's why he's saying it should be clarified to say whether this includes or excludes.
Excludes, I would say, because then we would be consistent with other-
I leave that to the board to let me know what you'd like in-
Whatever you want.
That, that would be alright.
Exclude? The mechanicals on the roof?
Yes.
You're excluding mechanicals on the roof.
Sandy?
Yeah, but it has to be clarified, yeah.
Wait, that it has to be clarified or that it should be exclude?
Exclude.
We've got two excludes and one clarified.
Sixty feet plus mechanical?
That's what Maria said.
Yes. Plus mechanical.
But shielded.
But shielded.
Yeah.
So you're saying now, okay, now we're-
So you're going to have, the roof height is going to be sixty, you're going to put a HVAC, HVAC on top of it. Now you're going to have some, some kind of barrier. It'll be a little, it'll be, mechanical can be six, ten feet tall. So you're looking at seventy feet possibly. It depends on how big a unit you're putting on top of the building. And we haven't even seen, so we can't even make a determination for the law, because we don't know what the site plan is. So how-
If you look at any other zone, you're typically presented, you have the zoning code. That was done before all the buildings came in, so it's kind of the same situation. But I've got you and, and Robert, now I'm looking at Sandy. If she wants this to be exclusive of the mechanical structures or facilities or clarify whether it should be inclusive or exclusive. Those were the two options. I just want to keep it going.
Yeah, because we're getting late here.
Yeah, I think that, let the village board clarify it.
Okay.
I'm with the first two, whatever they say.
Okay, so then it's going to be, it should be exclusive.
Exclusive of mechanicals which must be screened, right?
Yes.
You have a comment on that.
Oh my god. We're skipping off to the next page. Letter C, under three, which is non-residential uses. It says, each mixed-use building should be designed to have a focal point. So, so what they're deleting is the corner or end. So it's saying that every aspect of a building should have some kind of a focal point. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I think it's a design thing, just to give the building interest.
Um, I, if, you may want to consider replacing should with shall, so that it's clear that it has to have a focal point.
Alright.
So take, alright. Chris, you okay with that?
Oh yeah, it's checked off already.
Yes.
Sandy, Robert, okay. D, at least fifty, fifty percent of any street facade on a ground floor use of mixed should have, should be clear glass window. It used to say seventy-five feet or any- Seventy-five percent, excuse me, why do I say feet? I'm just, I'm okay with that.
Yes.
Okay. Letter F, no detached signs shall be permitted in a mixed-use area, except with each access point providing ingress from Route seventeen. Such sign shall otherwise comply with the dimensions requirements. So the design guidelines to be approved by the planning board is basically, in essence, what Woodbury Common has with their- Alright, so, so the applicant has to come up with a, with a sign plan.
That you approve.
That we have to, that we approve. I'm okay, you, that makes sense, Sandy. And that, we'll have to sit and-
It's made sense in many shapes and forms. It all, also helps Woodbury Common, if you remember. When they deal with their tenants, they say, this is it, you can't come up with a sound language plan, you have to conform. So if you agree with the applicant and you have a sign plan, then they have something to go to their tenants with and say, you must conform. It's worked.
Letter G. Fire department shall be consulted to determine maximum height permitted for hotels, but in no event should they be taller than four stories or sixty feet. That contradicts-
If there were three places that that was, so for each place that the building height was changed and, and said sixty feet, it'll be the same comment that we-
So you're going to delete four stories then?
No, that was not a request. But that's, the four stories is only for hotels. That was not a request, did that be deleted?
Just for the hotel, okay.
So it stayed in.
Alright. Indoor recreation and entertainment uses should incorporate design amounts into all visible sides of the structure. Maximum height of these uses should be sixty feet, not thirty-five feet. Ah, come on. I gave you the five sto- This was requested from the village board? For us to look at? Indoor recreation and entertainment uses should incorporate- What could possibly-
You gotta, you gotta have sixty feet for an auditorium or a, or something, an entertainment complex. We're going to have international stars here, we need big production houses.
Forget about parking, they're going to be flying in.
The landing strip is on the last page.
That's right. It's in accessory uses.
I, I'm leaving it alone for the village.
Leave it for the village.
I'll let, I'll let them. I, I, I just can't anymore.
So, but if-
Leave it as is.
With, with the addition with respect to mechanicals and-
Yes.
I'm sorry, what was that?
With the same inclusion, exclusion, I'm sorry. Inclusion of the language of exclusion for the mechanicals.
That's worse than me.
Whatever you said, yes, yes.
In other words, it excludes mechanicals, but they must be screened.
It makes it higher, just to say this.
Yeah. Number seven, notwithstanding the requirements of subsection three, ten, dash, eight, buildings not on mapped streets. And subsection three, ten, dash, eleven, D, maximum size of accessory buildings. The planning board as part of the site plan review shall determine the appropriate size, access, location, orientation of accessory buildings for non-residential uses in a TVZV. What are those buildings? Pump house, pool, supply, storage, what are we talking about?
I, I, I'm lost as to where you are.
Number seven, we're reading number seven on open space. Number seven, wherever.
Oh, this is where my parentheses is missing?
Yes.
The parentheses is actually after accessory buildings. Sorry.
So the, the planning board?
Um, it's, it's right before the planning board.
Oh, I see it, okay. I got you.
That's, my mistake is, it could cause some confusion. Those, so the, what's in the parentheses is really just summarizing what those two sections that are mentioned are about.
Gotcha.
And this says, forget about all the other requirements. Regardless of those, the planning board, as part of site plan review, shall determine the appropriate size, access, location, orientation of accessory buildings for non-residential uses in the transit district.
Ooh, so that actually takes care of your concerns, my bud.
Why didn't you put, why didn't you put that in the beginning?
I wish I thought of that, like, two hours ago.
Yeah. All right. Letter E, parking standards. Dennis, you're going to submit a, a separate letter to the board?
Yes, I will.
Okay. I'm not even going to go there. So, craft production, you're going to, that's going to be looked under, craft production, custom, whatever, workshop.
It's the same comments for winery and craft production.
Thank you. Number one there on the E. Then again, I'm going to ask you, what is reasonable distance space? It, it did say five hundred feet from the subject use. And then it says, a reasonable distance within the core area.
Yeah, it should be as determined by the planning board, under...
I don't think it says or the planning board finds adequate. Maybe the or should just be and.
Ju- just... What's a reasonable distance from the, within the...
You just need somebody to say who's reasonable, that's all you need.
So we'll say, the same comment as above where we said reasonable?
Under the circumstances, right? The planning board makes a determination.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Reasonable under the circumstances is determined by the planning board.
Okay. You're okay with that, board members?
Yes.
The last page from letter, from number four away to H. My only two questions are again, number five, outdoor seating with craft production, and I had a question mark with fast food restaurants.
So you want to have it with a comment that the Board of Trustees, um, should reflect upon the extent of outdoor uses that are allowable under these recommendations?
Outdoor seating areas associated with craft production or with retail use such as a delicatessen, baked, or... Shall be excluded when computing the required number of parking spaces. What if... The fifth grade decides to go down there with their parents because there's a fundraiser? Where am I putting them with parking? So why are we excluding the... Is the applicant going to come?
There's, there's a way that they handle that in the next paragraph, the number six.
Okay.
They say the same thing, but they say, um, to the extent that the number of outdoor seats does not exceed twenty-five seats, or twenty-five percent of the number of indoor seats. That at least sets some kind of a standard, that they can go up to here, but after that, then there has to be some further approval. So you might want to consider putting that same language in here. It allows some discretion for them to put outdoor seating in a small quantity, but if it gets to be significant, then it's, it has to have further approval.
You know, there's also the issue, uh, outdoor seating tends to be seasonal. If you, if you, if you try to provide parking for every seat, you, you end up with very large paved parking areas.
You have all parking.
You know, so, it's an attempt to try to, try to reduce the impact of parking. And a lot of people walking, this is a walkable community.
But there's also, in, in, it's sort of self-regulating, because in the wintertime, obviously, people like to sit inside, not outside.
Right.
And in the summertime, on a nice night, they like to sit outside. There are those days, though, when they could sit at both places.
You can have an unusual January, and, and where you have sixty-degree weather, and sit outside, like we just had recently.
But I think if you set a parameter and say that a certain portion could be allowed outside, it might be regulated enough, and beyond that, then they have been ruled a park, if they go beyond that, for a park.
Dennis, on number four. Doesn't that just obliterate all parking requirements? I mean, parking space requirements?
Well, it doesn't have to be on the same block as the use it serves.
So, you're saying people that are going to the restaurant, where the restaurant's supposed to have a certain amount of parking, now they can just go over and take somebody else's parking? So how are you supposed to figure out parking?
It's going to be shared, it's shared.
Parking. To make this work, they're saying that we have people that live here in a dense community, okay, and you're allowing a dense community. It's supposed to be a walkable, walkable community. Some people, if you have a nice restaurant, may drive there from here, okay, from Island Mills. But they're expecting that others, a lot of the others, will be walking to the place. And they're already parked there. So that person, you're counting a space for the residential building. And you don't want to count another space for the restaurant, because that person is going to be walking to the restaurant. That makes sense. There's going to be some of that. And they're, they're going to ask you in here that, that, we're going to have some overlap on this. You're going to have to have a percentage that's driving there, but, yeah, there's going to be some shared parking with people that are living there.
And that's what that's addressing, shared parking?
No, what, yes, kind of. It says, it doesn't actually have the same line. It also allows, uh, some flexibility as to where to place the parking. Uh, they may have a walkway, a closet area, going to a spot, if the village is going to need parking, let's call it a pop-up restaurant. So that may be in a spot where they don't have parking designated for it.
Okay.
But, uh, it need not be, but that need not be means it's within discretion of the board to determine whether it is. If you don't have that, I guess you'd think someone could argue that it has to be in that spot, and that may not be appropriate. But this still leaves, from what I can read, it leaves discretion up to you, once they present a plan.
Okay.
But this doesn't tie the hands of the developer to put in a plan which makes sense to you, and makes sense to the people that might live there.
Okay.
At least that's the way I read it.
But if I could jump back to number five, and, um, Dennis suggested moving the, basically the second half of number six, excluding it with number one, about the forty-five feet or...
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
It was two.
If you, if you were interested in that for number five as well? So second question, number six, did you want to include that in number five?
I think that's what we said.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And, um, did you also want to include the statement by Rick, that the Board of Trustees should reflect upon the number of outdoor uses that are allowable under these recommendations? About one had not.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's not true.
I just want to look at number... F, off-street loading standards. Notwithstanding any other provisions in chapter three-ten, the planning board shall determine in view of the uses proposed and their loading requirements, whether to require off-street loading berths, and where required, shall further determine the location... Okay. I read some places. So, from the conceptual plan, you're going to have a street, you're going to have multiple buildings with storefrontage, with a park, with condos above them. The condos, people who own them, they're going to go behind the building to park, and and that's how they're going to gain access to, that's where they're going to park, instead of off, off-street parking. So if that's going to be for the residents, and those streets are narrower, uh, there's really no off-street place to put the trucks for deliveries, but on the street, and they're going to have to be parking berths.
They're going to have to come up with a plan that you accept. Some, uh, businesses can accept, uh, goods and deliveries off-hours. Uh, others might have a, a business that requires it during the day, or something like that. They're going to have to present a plan that lets you know how they're going to make their deliveries, and make sure it's consistent with, um, uh, the parking requirements, maybe the loading areas, um, we'll have to see what develops. But that's a detail, uh, that's required in your code.
Yep.
And that they'd have to present.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just thinking three steps ahead of myself with the planning here, but, um, you have a craft store, you have a pub, or, you're going to have constant flow of FedEx, UPS, and whatnot coming in, private trucks. How are we going to determine... This is not like Woodbury Common, where it's not on a main street for deliveries before eight o'clock in the morning. That's going to be, that's, I'm, I'm just concerned with how we're going to handle that.
They'll have to present a plan to you that, that makes sense. If they need an alleyway behind, they need something on the side, they need a parking area, they need a designated loading zone. Uh, there's probably going to be a loading zone that's shared by maybe multiple stores. Uh, they may do it that way, same way the Central Valley Properties is proposing. So, you'll have to take a look and see, if it doesn't make sense, then they'll have to work something else out.
All right. Board members, you're okay with the rest? Letters G?
I don't like H, but that's me.
Which one? I, when reasonable and subject to appropriate conditions, apply with...
I don't like the, that we can waive any requirements.
I know, I don't like it either.
Which one?
H.
H.
Oh, we have a comment on H, too.
From H to M? Oof, bada boom. Go ahead, I, I'm, it's, it's late, you've got five minutes, come on. What's your comments on H?
I'm reading a comment here.
Oh, oh, okay, you're changing. Sorry, Rick, I didn't mean to rush you.
The comment is, what does it mean?
What is what?
What does it mean?
We can just leave our magic wand to anything.
I think when we were taking this over, we were realizing that H itself is extremely broad. Yeah, so we were trying to come up with a way to phrase it, that we could suggest to you that might be a little bit better, so I had written something down that Rick had said, so now he can see if I actually wrote it down properly.
Uh, and one of the problems I had is... One of the problems I had was the beginning phrase, "when reasonable." Right? Because it, it broadens everything out tremendously.
How about the word "any"?
Because, because if you, if you chop that off, and you just say, "subject to appropriate conditions, the planning board shall have the authority to waive," right? So, that's what it's going to be. I, I don't want to have an applicant saying, well, yeah, but what you're doing isn't reasonable, right? And an argument over whether or not it's reasonable, in this particular instance. If you want to go ahead and have appropriate conditions, you should have the right to have appropriate conditions on there. But it's very broad. I'm not sure that the, you may want to simply tell the Board of Trustees that, um, you have concerns of how, how broad this waiver provision is.
Yes.
That's what I would do.
Yes, we have, yeah.
Too broad.
Too broad.
Look to you to narrow it down.
I, I would say, though, that in a, in a project this comprehensive, and, and this expansive, and a first time, if you will, for, uh, the village of Woodbury, and the Board, and the Planning Board, and the Board of Trustees, there should be some flexibility for the Planning Board, so that you're not, um, stuck in a box, um, with something that clearly would be unreasonable not to have some kind of a waiver, and then put it the reverse. So that, that, we kind of need...
The trouble that I have with it is that, in my opinion, whenever there's a waiver clause, it should be accompanied by a standard. You know, it's too expensive on the applicant, it's unnecessary for, um, a small application that you need to have all these other requirements on a site plan. You know, there's some standard that you have. This standard is simply whether or not it's necessary in the interest of public health, safety, and general welfare. Or inappropriate. To me, that's not, it's too broad. That's the, the breadth of it that I have problems with. I think that there should be waiver provisions, but I think waiver provisions should be tied to some kind of standard. This is something that came in, was not specifically discussed when I had seen this earlier, um, the breadth of this waiver, and so I have concerns about it.
I think we're all in agreement, right?
Okay.
I agree, okay, I agree.
Where'd she go?
We all, we all agree. How do you vote?
All right, so I will put together a...
We all agreed on that last one.
A memo, a brief memo, with your comments on the, to the Board of Trustees, that you are recommending them subject to these items.
So, I, I would ask for that. This, um, redline version that we're talking about, plus the three definitions that...
Plus the three definitions that are outside of the Transit Village, that you approve these as recommendations to the Board of Trustees with comments with the accompanying comments. If we could have a motion to that effect.
And with Dennis's...
And, and with the additional comments that Dennis will provide directly on some technical issues.
I'll make the motion.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
It's all move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.